You may now begin.
Thank you. And I call the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, November 12, 2020, to order.
Thursday.
For those who tried to connect last night, this is the actual night for the meeting. It's postponed by a day. Roll call, please.
Chair Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Vice Chair Ron Heberlein.
There.
Jerry Greenfield.
Here.
Phyllis Millen. I believe you're muted, Commissioner Millen.
Here.
Briand Cinski.
Here.
Jennifer Willard. And Erin Woods.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now all rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
Note that I'm rise.
The pleasure of allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag. United States of America, due to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As typical, we start with citizens' input. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the planning commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight, and we don't have a public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. Do we have anybody?
We do not have any members in the audience this evening or on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is the consideration of the meeting of October 14, 2020 minutes. Any changers or corrections or questions about the minute? I don't see anybody raising their hand, and it's approved as submitted. The next item is under our work session items, Town Center Streetscape Plan. I will ask Ms. Bateshell to introduce the staff, and get it rolling.
Thank you, Chair Mesba. As he mentioned, my name is Miranda Bateshell, Planning Director for the City of Wilsonville. And I am very excited to introduce this item this evening. As you know, we spent two and a half years working through the Town Center Plan, which was adopted in the spring of 2019 after numerous public engagement activities and a vision that the community put together. And there were a number of implementation action items, and a few of them were on the near-term list. One of them, you had a public hearing on last month on the transportation system plan amendment, so that put in all of the actual infrastructure projects that need to be put in place for the multimodal transportation system that will serve and support that vision that the community put together. And this next item that you're going to hear about, the Streetscape Plan for the Town Center builds on that. But as we talked about through the planning process for Town Center, it wasn't just about travel patterns. It wasn't just how we get from point A to point B or how we move traffic. The Town Center is envisioned as the heart and the hub of the City of Wilsonville. And what we really wanted to create there was community gathering spaces. The community wanted a place that was a destination in and of itself. So there was a lot of discussion through that process that this is not just a transportation system. We need to be looking at the public realm. And the design is really important to how this space will function and the type of place that it creates. So that's a lot of what we're going to be here talking about during the duration of this project, is what pulls the public realm and the street front together, what frames that main street that the community wants to see through the heart of Town Center, and what creates a destination and a place that people want to go. So it's function as well as form and design. And we're excited to have the team here to discuss with you initial concepts related to that. This is just the beginning of the conversation. We started the conversation with the community just recently, and we're really excited to get your feedback and use it as we move forward into the next steps of the project. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville, and he's going to introduce specifically what we're hoping to get out of tonight's meeting and introduce the other members of the team that are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, Miranda. Good evening, Chair Mesba and planning commissioners. My name is Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville. So I'm going to provide a brief update on the status of the project since I introduced it originally to the commission in the March work session and let you know where we've gone since then. So we selected a consultant team, Sarah Architects, and they will be working with us to develop the Streetscape Plan. And in late September, we conducted a detailed site visit with the entire project team and other stakeholders from the city and walked around throughout Town Center and allowed the team to get familiar with the site context. And I also shared a lot of work that's been done in the past that relates to Town Center that can be used to sort of begin with a running start on this project, since a lot of the public feedback that we've gathered is still applicable and very recent. And so since then, we've also conducted the first public forum, which was on Tuesday of this week. And so far, we had good feedback, and members of the public did attend those meetings, and I'm excited to pass things over to Ben Weber with Sarah Architects, who will show you the initial project work so far and the tentative direction that we're heading with the project. And we're excited to hear your thoughts and get the answers to the questions that we have tonight.
All right, I think that's my cue. Thank you, Philip and Miranda, and thank you, planning commissioners, for inviting me here tonight. I'm very excited to share where we are in the project with you, as Philip and Miranda both expressed. Again, my name is Ben Weber, and the project manager representing Sarah Architects on this team, and speaking on behalf of a few very talented colleagues and designers who are supporting me in this effort. Philip mentioned we did a site tour about a month ago, which was my first in-depth look at the Town Center. But my colleague Dan Jenkins was one of the lead designers of Marassi Plaza, very nearby, and so I think it was a trip down memory lane for him a little bit to get back to Wilsonville after a couple of years away. And speaking on his behalf, he's excited to be working on this as well. Let me pause for just a moment and share my screen to get the ball rolling. Okay, is everyone seeing a slideshow and only a slideshow? All right. So yes, we're here introducing the substance of the Streetscape Plan for the first time with you. And make sure we can advance here. Our agenda tonight, you know, seven key topics. The first four of these, we want to go through pretty quickly, since it will be a lot of review for you as planning commissioners who are very steeped in efforts in your city the past couple of years. But to just give you a process overview and help you understand your role as commissioners in overseeing and guiding this project. An overview of our community engagement plan, some of which we kicked off just Tuesday, and other portions are upcoming. A quick look at other influential plans, some talk about the existing conditions and inspirations that provides for the Streetscape, some more general inspiration for Streetscapes gathered from around the Northwest, and trying to extract some ideas there. And then finally getting into some of the preliminary design concepts and next steps and questions. And it's really those final few agenda items we want to spend most of our time on. So quickly to the Streetscape process. We're about two months into this and anticipate going through summer 2021. So you can see we're in this initial phase with preliminary concepts. We had two sessions constituting forum number one on Tuesday, and I'll be providing a little bit of a summary of the community input we received during those. And then highlighted there in white, Planning Commission launching that off with you. So you'll see in subsequent phases with refined concepts, we're bringing the community forum back into play for another round, and that'll probably be February or March. The preferred concept phase, where we'll see you all, Planning Commission, and City Council, again for the draft plan, and then for the final concept and final plan, where we'll engage you to you all in City Council again. So a quick look at what we have in the works for community engagement. Stakeholder interviews are part of this, community forums are part of this, certainly city coordination, as well as targeted business outreach. Some of this is still being formulated as we speak, and we want to leave room in this plan to be opportunistic and to talk to different parties and organizations as different needs arise. But one question we want to pose to you right away is, as we start to plot who to contact as stakeholders, we have a list in the running and in the works, but we'd like to sort of ask you all as planning commissioners, are there other folks who are key stakeholders in the Town Center's future who we should be conversing with? I'll ask that now, but also welcome any names or groups that you want to bring up throughout the course of our time discussing this project tonight. So I'll pause for a moment, just see if any names immediately pop up.
And I guess my question for you is, who's on the list so far?
Yeah, definitely, and Philip has a deeper understanding of that.
So far on our list of people that we're considering are different landowners in the area. ROIC first came to mind as they are the largest property owner in the Town Center. And we also were considering reaching out to people who have been very active in the Town Center planning process and have history with the Town Center. Susan Myers, who's a property owner, developer with the Town Center, did come to mind. We've not reached out yet, but she was in one of the public forums, so she's also actively engaged in this project so far. And then we were also considering possibly a staff member who would be possibly particularly interested in this project, or anyone else who has a vested interest in the Wilsonville Town Center, but we've not narrowed it down to a specific set list of people thus far. But we welcome any suggestions you may have, either now or at the end of the presentation when there's time for discussion.
All right, well, I'll remember as we close out to bring this question back up. So a little bit of background, as Miranda and Philip mentioned, this is an implementation, planning, and design effort that's directly derived out of your Town Center Plan adopted last year. Just want to focus on this first sentence here a bit, you know, about Town Center being a vibrant, walkable destination that inspires people to come together and socialize, shop, live. other stakeholders from the city and walked around throughout Town Center and allowed the team to get familiar with the site context. And I also shared a lot of work that's been done in the past that relates to Town Center that can be used to sort of begin with a running start on this project. There's a lot of the public feedback that we've gathered is still applicable and very recent. And so since then, we've also conducted the first public forum, which was on Tuesday of this week. And so far, we had good feedback and members of the public did attend those meetings. And I'm excited to pass things over to Ben Weber with Sarah Architects, who will show you the initial project work so far and the tentative direction that we're heading with the project. And we're excited to hear your thoughts and get the answers to the questions that we have tonight.
All right. I think that's my cue. Thank you, Philip and Miranda, and thank you, Planning Commissioners, for inviting me here tonight. I'm very excited to share where we are in the project with you, as Philip and Miranda both expressed. Again, my name is Ben Weber. I'm the Project Manager representing Sarah Architects on this team. And speaking on behalf of a few very talented colleagues and designers who are supporting me in this effort. Philip mentioned we did a site tour about a month ago, which was my first in-depth look at the Town Center. But my colleague Dan Jenkins was one of the lead designers of Marassi Plaza very nearby. And so I think it was a trip down memory lane for him a little bit to get back to Wilsonville after a couple of years away. And speaking on his behalf, he's excited to be working on this as well. Let me pause for just a moment and share my screen to get the ball rolling. Is everyone seeing a slideshow and only a slideshow? All right. So yes, we're here introducing the substance of the streetscape plan for the first time with you. And make sure we can advance here. Our agenda tonight, you know, seven key topics. The first four of these, we want to go through pretty quickly, since it will be a lot of review for you as Planning Commissioners, who are very steeped in efforts in your city the past couple of years. But to just give you a process overview and help you understand your role as Commissioners in overseeing and guiding this project. An overview of our community engagement plan, some of which we kicked off just Tuesday and other portions are upcoming. A quick look at other influential plans. Some talk about the existing conditions and inspirations that provides for the streetscape. Some more general inspiration for streetscapes gathered from around the Northwest and trying to extract some ideas there. And then finally getting into some of the preliminary design concepts and next steps and questions. And it's really those final few agenda items we want to spend most of our time on. So quickly to the streetscape process. We're about two months into this and anticipate going through summer 2021. So you can see we're in this initial phase with preliminary concepts. We had two sessions constituting forum number one on Tuesday. And I'll be providing a little bit of a summary of the community input we received during those. And then highlighted there in white, Planning Commission launching that off with you. So you'll see in subsequent phases with refined concepts, we're bringing the community forum back into play for another round, and that'll probably be February or March. The preferred concept phase, where we'll see you all, Planning Commission and City Council, again for the draft plan, and then for the final concept and final plan, where we'll engage you to you all and City Council again. So a quick look at what we have in the works for community engagement. Stakeholder interviews are part of this. Community forums are part of this. Certainly, city coordination as well as targeted business outreach. Some of this is still being formulated as we speak, and we want to leave room in this plan to be opportunistic and to talk to different parties and organizations as different needs arise. But one question we want to pose to you right away is, as we start to plot who to contact as stakeholders, we have a list in the running and in the works, but we'd like to sort of ask you all as Planning Commissioners, are there other folks who are key stakeholders in the Town Center's future who we should be conversing with? I'll ask that now, but also welcome any names or groups that you want to bring up throughout the course of our time discussing this project tonight. So I'll pause for a moment, just see if any names immediately pop up.
And I guess my question for you is, who's on the list so far?
Yeah, definitely. And Philip has a deeper understanding of that.
So far on our list of people that we're considering are different landowners in the area. ROIC first came to mind as they are the largest property owner in the Town Center. And we also were considering reaching out to people who have been very active in the Town Center planning process and have history with the Town Center. Susan Myers, who's a property owner and developer with the Town Center, did come to mind. We've not reached out yet, but she was in one of the public forums, so she's also actively engaged in this project so far. And then we were also considering possibly a staff member who would be possibly particularly interested in this project, or anyone else who has a vested interest in the Wilsonville Town Center, but we've not narrowed it down to a specific set list of people thus far. But we welcome any suggestions you may have, either now or at the end of the presentation when there's time for discussion.
All right. Well, I'll remember as we close out to bring this question back up. So a little bit of background. As Miranda and Philip mentioned, this is an implementation, planning and design effort that's directly derived out of your Town Center plan adopted last year. Just want to focus on this first sentence here a bit, you know, about Town Center being a vibrant, walkable destination that inspires people to come together and socialize, shop, live and work. And really using that guiding vision to suffuse throughout all of the design decisions and concepts that we're coming up with for the next few months. I'm sure I didn't really have to remind you all of this vision, but it's definitely a good thing for me to continue saying out loud, so that I have a really sensitive and honed-in lens on the kind of work we're trying to accomplish through the streetscapes. More specifically, the Town Center Plan calls for, you know, a streetscape that uses a coherent palette of design features to tie the Town Center roadways together, reflects a preference for more modern design and natural aesthetic and materials, such as stone, wood, brick and glass, identifies all the major elements of the streetscape, everything from benches to pavers to landscaping and trees and everything in between. And of course, coordinates with the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which is a project that's underway as we speak. And I believe perhaps the consulting firm that's assisting with that will be one of those stakeholders that we make contact with in the next few weeks. The Town Center goals, these are also really helping to shape our design decisions and design inspiration. I won't go over these in too much depth. I just want to point out, you know, how we intend to interpret some of these, like looking at goal number two and that first measure of success for a cohesive design palette of aesthetic qualities derived from community identified features, you know, both new and existing for the Town Center. So we'll spend a little bit more time kind of digging into what in the Town Center exists today that we can build upon, and what new fresh look can help complement that. Same thing for goals four, five and six. The process of this is certainly building off of the street hierarchy you established in the Town Center Plan, acknowledging that you have streets that are going to serve many different functions, new streets, refreshes to old streets, building out your street grid and providing connectivity and access to a lot of different properties and parcels. Our order of operations is to sort of come up with a concept and a theme at the high level that can serve that unifying purpose, get a lot of community and Planning Commission and Decision Maker buy-in on that, and then start applying it to the specific needs of those different streets. We'll show you some of those examples that we'll be applying to. We're also, of course, acknowledging the Town Center's role in your multimodal network and its central location in Wilsonville with cycle tracks, bikeways, you know, wide sidewalks, car-free promenades, and of course, the I-5 Bridge underway currently. We're recognizing how important this is as a node for people moving about the city. This is a quick look at some of those cross-sections. There are nine or 10 of these in the Town Center Plan, just to look at a few, such as Park Place at Town Center Park, and your goals and vision for a festival street or a very flexible street that could be closed and used for people and gathering activities at different times of the year. An extension of that street through what is now just a parking lot, but a chance to open up that area to development and access and bringing in all the usual street features like sidewalks, stormwater and vehicle lanes. In other circumstances, putting, you know, buffered bike lanes on the street to really help build out that protected, friendly and safe bikeway network. Or even in some instances, no cars at all, you know, a promenade that uses stormwater features, cycle track, and a really wide gathering space for people to walk up and down, but also to sit and linger, and to allow the streetscape to be that place where the public realm and the private realm permeates building walls and allows people to move from inside and outside in a really appealing way. Quick point to a couple influential plans that we're taking note of, you know, the Urban Forestry Plan, which is underway, and all that that will do to shape tree and planting selections, stormwater solutions, and even nuts and bolts things like making sure roots don't cause sidewalk upheaval. We'll be coordinating with that project to make sure that their recommendations and our design concepts are synchronized. The I-5 Bridge project that's underway, taking cues from some of those design influences and really leveraging the fact that that project has spoken with, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people through different community events, who have also provided really valuable input about their vision for the future of the Town Center. And then the Wayfinding and Signage Plan, it's another one we'll point out, as a recently adopted plan that starts to execute these design features. A few others like the Connectivity Plan, Tree and Landscape Standards and Stormwater Standards, sort of table stakes to make sure that we're in compliant with all of your public works, TSP and other connectivity work that's underway. Just to get a little more detailed, you know, the I-5 Bridge concept, a lot of community support for art and sustainability features, an emphasis on gathering places, use of the tree canopy to provide protection from shade, the sun and rain throughout the seasons. So we'll be looking, you know, maybe not these literal interpretations of design, but looking to be complementary with the bridge design and the plaza that's coming out of the I-5 work right now. And then a quick peek at your standards that have emerged from the Wayfinding and Signage Plan. So you can see right here that influence of stone and core ten steel, and kind of a natural fluid, modern aesthetic to the streetscape feature. So this is something we'll want to be building off of and complementing. So all of that stuff I just quickly went through. We spent a little more time discussing that in the community forums on Tuesday, understanding that community members were probably a little bit newer to that content than you all as Planning Commissioners would be. And just want to reflect that from those conversations on Tuesday, you know, we heard a lot of broad support for those Town Center Plan goals. And really sort of an emphasis on the walkability of the street network, a lot of people really speaking up for covered gathering areas and wanting the streets and public spaces to be usable year-round, acknowledging that days like today are cold and rainy, recognizing the appeal and function of stormwater mitigation across your streets, how that can be attractive and utilitarian, public art and recognition of heritage sites such as the Korean War Memorial and what that does to, you know, kind of add distinction, a unique gathering space in the Town Center. How can we emphasize that and make sure it's a keynote in the area? Local and natural materials and exclamation point, people first, you know, building off of knowing that not just in the Town Center Plan did you put all those streetscape concepts together that really emphasized walking and biking and a safe, low-stress, kind of low-car environment. But thinking about how streetscapes can be those gathering places and aren't just ways to get around, but can be destinations unto themselves, you know, serving people of all ages and abilities. And so to you, first discussion question, you know, the Town Center Plan feedback favored that modern, natural design aesthetic and use of wood, stone, glass and brick. So do you support the use of some of these primary materials in the streetscape? And I welcome any specific or general impressions you might have about that.
This is Aaron Woods. I believe that the use of the materials that you've outlined, wood, stone, glass and have talked about, I believe it's in line with the feedback, like what you just said, on sustainability and art. I also think that these materials lend themselves for use in a number of creative ways. So yeah, I support what you've shown and also comments. I think these materials are the kind of materials that we want to see in our Town Center.
Commissioner Greenfield, what else could there be? Fine freets lab? Classic, these are an apple.
I'll show you some really atrocious options, if you like.
I would make the point that brick is good for decorative purposes, it's not good for structural purposes due to its seismic vulnerability.
Commissioner Juzinski?
Yeah, I second what Commissioner Woods said. I think that all of those materials have a obviously natural but timeless look about them. It's not going to look dated in 10 years. It can be sustainable and kind of reflects the nature and beauty of our town and our state and what's around us, and use that kind of, those kind of materials and incorporate it into the design a little bit.
Commissioner Aberline?
That's a red brand, that perfectly does.
Okay. Commissioner Mellon?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just, I would hearken back to the discussions we had around the wayfaring, the wayfinding and signage, and how much interest there was in the use of the stone. That was really, really important to a lot of people. And so, yes, I think you're on the right track, but you know, kind of the curvy lines, the stone, that was real important when we were going through that whole wayfinding and signage discussions with the public. So we're moving along in the right direction.
I don't see steel in this list, by the way. Our wayfinding signs have steel in them, and steel can be used aesthetically in buildings and overhangs and so forth beautifully. Was that intentional, or is that just not there?
No, I don't think it was an intentional oversight, and it's definitely one we can add to the list for consideration. And certainly that raises the point that these four materials are not the only four materials we would use. In many instances, they would be used sparingly for accent purposes, and steel and metal will be obviously necessary for structural purposes and shelters and benches and light poles in many instances. So definitely fair game.
The steel that we're using in our signage is a weathered look, rusted look, that I think mitigates its hardness.
Any other comments from the Commission? Have you heard enough support of the question or the materials you're using to move on?
Yeah, I think so. It's encouraging support, and you may have other thoughts on this as well when we get deeper into the concept discussion, to see a little more specific application.
Oh, this is not a shy crowd, don't worry.
All right. So a quick review of existing conditions. I think that this image is just to show the opportunity of the streetscape to be a catalyst for, you know, urban development, economic development, place-making in the Town Center. You have a lot of vacant spaces and parking lots that can use a shot in the arm in the Town Center, as you well know. And so we recognize the necessity of the streetscape project to help be a catalyst for that. We also know that the streetscapes are responding to different urban conditions, high activity centers, Main Street feel activity centers, you know, even light activity. And we bring our urban design sensibilities to that, to sort of craft a streetscape concept that's coherent and cohesive, but flexible enough to respond not just to different transportation needs, but to different ways that the streetscape helps tie together open spaces, single-story buildings, multi-story buildings, housing, commercial spaces and what have you. And it's a good reminder, as I mentioned earlier, you know, these streets are going to require different levels of intervention. Some will be entirely new, some will be significant redesigns and rebuilds, and others may just need a minor refresh in certain instances. Also to point out, this is going to happen over time, you know, potentially decades to see this build-out happen. So we want a streetscape that is flexible enough to not leave you hanging as different segments are built, you know, year over year. So the Town Center Plan, you know, specifically asked, and as good practitioners, we want to know what the Town Center looks like today and what kind of inspiration we can derive. So that tour that we did about a month ago, you know, showed us some things we can build off of. You have places like Park Place North that are kind of utilitarian and disjointed, but one thing this represents is where that used to be a cul-de-sac, you know, in a previous era. You punch through a new street here. So that's just indicative of the evolution of the Town Center, that it's never going to be locked in stone. Some streets, like Courtside, already sort of have all the facilities you're looking for, sidewalks, a bus pullout, a bike lane, you know, conventional vehicle lanes that may serve a really useful purpose right now. We need to be thinking ahead to, how does a street like Courtside function when, instead of that being a grassy hill, that might be a mixed-use housing and commercial project, or it might be a civic center or a gymnasium? And so kind of thinking ahead to, you know, that vertical development opportunity that the Town Center might witness. Park Place at Courtside, this is sort of the key central intersection in the Town Center, and it's a place where you're mixing street types and access to businesses and open space and some of those promenade uses. So there's a unique kind of blending of different urban elements that's going to happen here. And of course, knowing that that intersection is right next to your Town Center Park, so how can we draw inspiration from this recent design, the curvilinear elements of this fountain, the landscaping, the use of trees? What design cues can we take, and how can we use the streetscape to make this a more accessible, you know, present and central place in the Town Center? Wilsonville Road, we're not tackling a complete redesign of Wilsonville Road. That's a lot to chew off, but we are going to be thinking about the intersection designs, at least, of new and existing streets that are going to hit Wilsonville Road. And of course, how to make it a safer and more inviting place, especially when you consider Memorial Park and Marassi Plaza right across the street, that kind of psychically feels like part of the Town Center. We want to make sure that that's an easy and natural place to get to. And if you'll remember back to the multimodal network maps, you know, the connection to Memorial Park is central to that. And then even looking away from the streets a little bit, you know, the use of metal, glass, built-in furnishings, you know, can we draw inspiration from this shelter structure that's in the park? How can we honor and make an interpretation of the use of carved stone and brick at the Korean War Memorial? How do we serve transit with, you know, small-seated stops on the left or full shelters here on the right and make that an integral part of the streetscape? How do we build in stormwater, I mean, ecosystem services features like this that are functional but also attractive and help define space? And sort of a very important need where, you know, I'm taking this photo from the sidewalk, the public realm of a private stormwater facility, but it sort of helps blend spaces together in an elegant way. And then taking advantage of your landmarks, you know, Apache, of course, your Town Center Park and all that that means for the community. Are there little gems like this in the Town Center that we want to acknowledge and even enhance through the streetscape? And then looking at some of the newer buildings, like City Hall, that kind of reflects that distinct use of materials, but glass and brick, of course, the potential to blend the streetscape and building design together here. the streetscape and building design together here. But I think we can kind of acknowledge that the City Hall neglects the street a little bit, sort of an inward-facing building. We want to be in a position where the streetscape really catalyzes the development of buildings that face the street. It helps you build out that block pattern and really encourages that movement between the public realm and private spaces. Well, looking at things like your existing lighting, it's all functional, it's all distinct. It's just a little bit of a mix and match. So, we want to bring some uniformity to that. Same thing with some of your furnishings, whether it's bollards or trash cans or street benches, you know, all functional and well-intentioned stuff. We just want to use the streetscape as a way to really think about what kind of design palette and materials palette should we suffuse throughout the entire space. So, the next question to you all then is, are there designs and key features in the town center today and what we just looked at that you like and want to build upon for this streetscape project?
Who wants to go first?
I'll go first again.
Go ahead.
I really like the idea of the covered shelters and expanding on the covered shelters. As we all know, we have a lot of rain here in climate weather and I think what little we have done in that area looks good, but I'd like to see us expand on that in the Memorial Park area as well as Marassi Memorial Park. So, specifically for me, more places that people can gather but that are sheltered.
Someone in the, in the forum on Tuesday emphasized a point that they like the sheltered walkways that exist currently in the shopping area and, you know, by Rite Aid and Safeway and would like to see that as a feature throughout the development. And I strongly concur, given that we're, we have rain nine months of the year. That seems to be a very sensible thing. If we can do it in a way that is integrative and really invites people to be out and taking advantage of the shelter and the ability to move around the town center. Thank you. Commissioner Mellon? You know, I'm muted.
Okay, yep. Sorry about that. Yeah, I think one of the things too is looking at a flow of these areas. So, it's not disjointed. Right now, we've got nice areas, but they're not, there's no connection, there's no, I guess, yeah, I'll use the word flow. As you, as you walk from Marassi Park and then you're in just kind of cement and then you go over and then there's Memorial Park. So, there's these areas, but they're not connected and I kind of, I know we've got that green chain idea that's been floated out there and I just want to emphasize that is that that's real important because if I'm going to feel like this is a place I want to hang out in, I want to spend time in, then it's got to be connected, not disjointed like it is now. So, that's kind of one of the features that's important to me is whether it's covered walkways or, you know, that the, not a yellow brick road, but that kind of sense of that something, a path that I'm following that kind of blend, that connects everything. But yeah, maybe, you know, the yellow brick road is a little extreme, but that thought pattern of something that connects everything.
Thank you. Commissioner Juzinski?
I would like to highlight some of the features that we kind of already have in the town. Apache and the fountains, beautiful fountains that we have that all the kids like to play in and the War Memorial. If we could do something to kind of highlight some of those things that we know and love already, that would be kind of a nice way to go, especially I think for the War Memorial. I don't know if a lot of people go and actually visit it. It's a beautiful site. If we could maybe have a reflection area. I know there's not like a lot of benches or anything, something in that so that people actually can see it and appreciate it for what we have.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Aberline?
I really do like the idea of the covered walkways. I would be curious to see an implementation in such a large area that was effective from a covering standpoint but not obtrusive in terms of natural lighting and also not monolithic. You know, you can, you can use glass, but do you really want to use glass for, you know, a half a mile stretch on both sides of the street, for example? You know, so I really like the idea of the covered walkway, but just am very curious to how we can, how we can make it aesthetically pleasing and functional at the same time, given that we have such a large area that we're talking about. And then uniformity, I really do like the idea of, you know, getting the fixturing and the seating and those things, especially in the specific areas, uniform or if we've got specific scenes going through the different areas, whether it's the Emerald Chain has a distinct coloring scene for the benches that might be different than the, than the Main Street area. Things like that to kind of give you a sense of where you are and, but also know that you're, you're all in one, in one area.
Is that enough input?
I'd like to add one more.
Go ahead.
Speaking up on an idea someone's already mentioned, I think Ron. We have several pieces of art sculpture in town center presently and we could use a lot more throughout the whole development. I'd love for our town center to be kind of an outdoor gallery. And that could be accompanied by an art walk guide that brings people to the different parts of town center to see the different sculptures. And not only outdoor sculptures, but we ought to be encouraging, if not requiring. I'd like to see as requiring incorporation of art in the, in some of the buildings as just, even, even a, an art, what's it called, the percent for art requirement in development. But in any case, encouragement of art within the buildings and in the public parts of the buildings at least, so that people are encouraged to get around within the town center and see what's there, not just to buy things or for those purposes, but to enjoy the aesthetic of the place.
Thank you. Very good.
All right. Is that everyone? I think.
I think.
All right. Thank you. Those are really great points and just to respond to a few of those in turn. You know, certainly weather protection and factors like that are appealing. We probably have to surmise that fully arcaded streets or covered sidewalks may not be practical, but we do want a streetscape that accommodates, you know, awnings that private developers bring in. And that's certainly encouraged as part of your town center design aesthetic and standards there. So, taking note of that. And then, you know, Commissioners Tuzinski and Mellon, you mentioned the Emerald Chain and, and some of the opportunities to create sort of specific little design moments along that. To this point, I had really only been talking about the streetscape as kind of a linear feature, but another piece of our project scope is to think about a couple of those unique locations that are, you know, maybe troublesome right now and trying to solve a problem, but also locations that are unique and kind of central places in the town center. What kind of public space and public realm design can we put in place there? So, we'll be continuing to explore that avenue. Okay, moving into streetscape concepts, quickly want to just have a sort of conversation about what streetscapes can do for you, a little bit of appetite wedding, I think we'll call it, and seeing ways in which the goals that you've established for the streetscape can actually be manifest on the ground in ways like supporting many modes of travel with protected cycle tracks, in this case, transit lanes, landscape buffering and sidewalks, you know, really dedicated space for all different modes of travel in an interactive streetscape environment. Streets that can adapt to many different buildings and place designs. You know, in this photo, you're seeing 100-year-old buildings and brand-new one-year-old buildings, but the use of native plantings and local materials and kind of a simple elegant aesthetic to tie all of that together. You know, we know that the town center has buildings of different ages and eras and design aesthetics, so we want to be responsive to all that. You could go sort of all in with a signature look like Truckee, California does, embracing that old west town vibe, bringing railroad artifacts into your streetscape, sort of going all in on pavers. It takes a certain gumption to do this, I think, as a town, but it's an idea that we always want to just bring up, if nothing more than to be provocative with it. But it is kind of a useful way of thinking about if Wilsonville really were to embrace a signature look, you know, what's kind of the feeling of your town that you would manifest and design through your streetscape? A little bit of a devil's advocate question there. You know, no matter what, we want a unified and flexible street design. You may be familiar with Alpine Avenue in McMinnville. It used to be just a gravel road, but now serves industrial uses and commercial spaces and really makes interesting use of the vertical space. So, not just thinking in 2D, but how do you bring landscaping and trellises and some of that industrial heritage to a street like this? Ensuring streets welcome people, encouraging outdoor seating, business visibility, protection using landscaping from parking and moving traffic, and just as importantly, kind of complementing your building design standards that are encouraging transparency and with things like these roll-up garage doors, you know, a really seamless blend of indoor and outdoor spaces. How all that comes together on a street and a before and after kind of scenario, you know, here in Albany, Oregon? And then an after situation where they really kind of went all in, two rows of plantings and movable planters, paver blocks, streetlights and benches, but all to create kind of different layers of the streetscape and with the added benefit of narrowing the street to make it a calmer, safer, more inviting place. So, we'd also sort of shown and discussed all that content on Tuesday with community members and really just want to kind of summarize a few key points here, I think a lot of which you all have echoed. Coverage and protection for transit stops, recognition of open spaces and fountains as key destinations or really appealing features of the town center. Generally, a lot of support for the modern and natural design aesthetic and other folks to sort of point to Memorial Park, Marassi Plaza and the Town Center Park as ways that that's done well today. People wanting better lighting for bike and ped safety, you know, and maybe the added benefit of that is not just safety, but just more appealing streets for gathering. Not only is it wet here, but it's dark here nine months out of the year. And then a few of the communities, we showed a more expansive list of communities to various folks. Places like Lake Oswego and Winslow, Washington received some top votes there. I would point out Lake Oswego is one of those towns that has abundant street art sculptures and murals everywhere and they also have a street art walking program. A little bit of local inspiration there. So, a question to you all then is, you know, based on those streetscape examples, are there any specific elements from what you saw there or other places you know that you'd like us to consider as part of the design concepts for Wilsonville?
If I may, Chair Masbah?
Go ahead.
If I may, I just want to note the time. We, this agenda item goes until seven. We do have two other agenda items tonight that are also kind of lengthy. I'm wondering if we can combine this question with your final question and kind of get feedback and do just one more roundtable on the commissioners with the two questions together so we can make sure they have time to look over the three different design concepts that are in front of them this evening.
Are you asking me for permission to do that or the presenter?
I actually didn't clarify who I was asking and I realize that in the silence. I am asking you, Chair Masbah, if that sounds like an amenable approach to you.
Absolutely, if that is the consideration of time that the staff is suggesting to us. I want to note though that the commission has been particularly short-spoken, so I don't want to have them feel like they're being punished for their brevity.
Absolutely not. I think you can handle both questions at the same time.
Right, I feel the same. Okay, keep this idea in the back of your head. Now, into the guts of it, just briefly to mention, you know, we are looking at streetscapes and those special intervention places, as I mentioned earlier. We don't know exactly which ones yet. That's part of the process for the next couple of months, but keep that lens in mind of how to take the high-level concept and apply it to the nuances of different streets that are forthcoming. So, here's where we are in the initial design concept phase, really thinking about just the storytelling and the themes of these. And these are diagrams that are really just designed to kind of organize ideas. It's colors and representative of movement. Dark gray doesn't mean one thing, light gray doesn't mean another thing. It's more just a representation of a theme. First one here is called agricultural legacy, recognizing the agrarian roots, the equestrian roots that Wilsonville was founded on, you know, a century and a half ago or so, thinking about all sorts of different features that could be incorporated into this streetscape, but in kind of that rectilinear, you know, you're up in an airplane looking at a field from high above, that sort of geometric organization. So, some of those palette features include the use of, you know, large timbers, stone fencing in the bottom right, these planter boxes that, you know, sort of mimic the look of hay bales, kind of neatly organized throughout a freshly harvested field. The next one, technological innovation, knowing that how central that is to Wilsonville's current economy, the ideas of modularity and simplicity and contrast. So, layering and a little bit of disordered randomness to shapes in your streetscape. But you can kind of squint at that and see there's movement places, but there's also places to sort of eddy out and gather and you can see places where street trees would exist, where benches would exist. Some of the features that might exist in that, you know, certainly taking some of that literally with an emphasis on electric vehicle charging stations and Wi-Fi hotspots if you want to go in that direction or other ways of bringing stones or sort of modern shapes in to help define sitting and gathering spaces. Or when you look at the bottom right, you're kind of blending parking, seating, landscape areas, bicycle zones altogether, but using the color palette to kind of create a little bit of that uniformity and disorder to it. bit of that uniformity and disorder to it. And then finally, knowing that the river is just blocks away to the south, so another way of ordering your space, and really I should have saved the eddy-out metaphor for this one, I think, but, you know, natural and fluid, not a lot of linearity to it, but ways of more meandering through your streetscape. And what this might look like on the ground is, you know, flowing cycle tracks, curvilinear planters, using vertical elements and recesses in different spaces. I think you could say that, you know, that woman on the bottom right has eddied out on her bike here to sort of catch a breather from moving up and down the streetscape. So that's kind of where we are with the preliminary concepts, just wrapping our heads around bringing some order to it. And so take that last question about inspiration from other places, kind of mesh it together with where we are in the concepts right now, and pose that question to you of, you know, within these three preliminary concepts, do you think they capture the range of themes and ideas you'd like to see further developed as we continue designing?
I still want to start with Everline this round.
I'll do it. So Ben, one question for you on these, are you looking for a preference between the three or a general question of do these, do all of these seem like a good path to look at further?
Yeah, that's a good question I should have been more clear about. You're not voting, you're not picking favorites or preferences at this point. We're going to carry, you know, three options forward for quite a while to start teasing out more design ideas, but if one of these isn't appealing, or if one is, you know, I'd love to know, like, what you find attractive and worth continuing with versus other features that just don't quite strike you.
Okay. So from my perspective, I think the River Organic and the Ag Legacy maybe are a little more timeless and go along with the materials that we've been talking about. You know, the tech innovation has the potential to become dated if that goes out of style. In terms of the features, you know, one thing when I was looking at the pictures that really caught my eye were the light posts that were made of wood. Those are really distinct features and something that is, I think, a great way to make things stand out. You know, you look at the wooden light posts in comparison to the metal ones, and while the metal ones are supremely functional, they don't hold a candle to the wood in terms of, especially if you're looking at more of that natural features. And then, you know, another one that caught my eye was actually, there was a picture of the backside of a sign post, of like a yield sign or something like that, and, you know, that very utilitarian square metal sign post that's used everywhere because it's cheap and it's easy to even put a stop sign on top of it or whatever other sign, but it looks unslightly. And so doing little things like that to be able to show, you know, to improve the aesthetics, you still have to have the sign, but you can make the posts look better than what they are and have a significantly different-looking environment just by making some of the small changes.
Thank you. Commissioner Zuzinski?
He kind of just took the words out of my mouth. Agricultural Legacy and the river, to me, speak a lot more to the timelessness that we're, I think we kind of are leaning towards. They both seem like they would lend themselves better to the glass and the wood and the stone that people have kind of said that they are looking for in that. I do like the river idea, to me, since we are so close to the river and, you know, the town was started with Boone's Ferry, it, to me, kind of lends itself to that history a little more. But, you know, having those specific, like, these light posts with the hay bales kind of thing, but having the specific details that hearken back to the history of our town and still look timeless and are aesthetically pleasing, but maybe, you know, there's a, hey, that looks like it could have been, you know, a nod to this part of our town or that, or that, or, you know, what have you, but that, to me, those two kind of speak more to the good direction I think we want to go a little bit.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I guess I'm unmuted. Am I?
You are.
I am, okay, I am, good. I guess I would echo what's being said is that the agriculture and the river seem to feel a little more like some of the other concepts that we've been looking at. The I-5 Bridge that we've just gotten, you know, spent a lot of time on, and the park at the end of that, the Ripples, I believe it was Ripples, was the name of one of the area. So that kind of, that theme seems to be moving through here, and then you kind of, but the agriculture has a real connection too, I think, for the city. You go across over to Memorial Park and you've got the Steinbooser Barn there. So I think, you know, I don't want to be mixing too many elements in here. I think, you know, you talked about kind of going all out like Truckee did, which is just a cool place to walk around. And so I don't think we want to mix and match too much, but I think there's probably a way to blend a little bit of the agriculture and the river together and not change too much, kind of some of the other things that we've kind of already said we really like, like the stones in the Wayfarer and the ripple effect, the kind of, I guess, river kind of effect of the landing area of the bridge. So, yeah, I'm kind of seeing that we don't, we don't want to throw too many design elements in here and kind of go off on a whole different direction. That's, yeah.
Thank you. Chair?
I think that the, I echo most of what's been said, but I think that the public input we've gotten to the bike-ped bridge, to signage, just generally favors rectilinear, curvilinear over rectilinear
Yeah.
... design as a pretty consistent community preference. I think we need to be careful about not going overboard on thematic unity in our design here, and I certainly would not like to go the direction that West Lynn took with their old-town area, where they tried to recreate in some way, you know, 19th-century features with false fronts and so forth. Let's be sensible and modern, respectful of Wilsonville traditions where they're important, but not artificial.
Thank you. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, I happen to believe that all three concepts can provide a nice range of design city center. I look at Wilsonville as being a very innovative city. As such, I think that the technological innovation piece that we saw, I believe it's important to incorporate that into the planning as well. We're not just planning for the day, we're planning for the future, and as such, I think we need to think about those things. Electric vehicles, which I'm a big proponent of, and many of us will become here soon, since they'll become prominent, and then the charging, what do you want to call them, poles or stations or places, I envision seeing those around the city in different places. I'm sure our younger crowd would love that as well as others, since we're all tied to our devices, our phone devices. Also, when we look at the actual streetscape with the wide streets, I think that in itself is so tandemant to what we want to look at from a landscape buffering piece. To me, it gives a modern look and also a safe feel, feel with all of the, you know, that landscape buffering, whether it's from the street or the bike lanes, et cetera. And then with the wider street ability or for potential restaurants to have street seating, I think that encourages customers to want to wander and explore when it gives a more of an open feel to the entire area. So I think, you know, going back to what I said in the beginning, the three concepts, I think, give a pretty broad ability to the designers to incorporate what our residents have requested and said they like, as well as, I think, incorporate some things for the future.
Thank you. I think everybody has mentioned aspects that I saw in these designs. I have to be a contrarian about the hay bale planters, though. I think they can become hokey, and, you know, it's hard to tell because we don't see the final design in detail, but let's keep it real, is, I guess, what I would like to see. Any other comments from the commissioners? Have we answered your questions, Mr. Wood?
Yes, absolutely. I really appreciate all that input and letting me provoke your opinions a little bit and you being, you know, frank and innovative with me and thinking about the state of these early concepts. So definitely in future phases of this project, you know, I'll be coming back to you with more detail and more meat on those bones, to have deeper conversations about these designs, and in between then, you know, my team and Philip and Miranda and other city staff, definitely be honing these and putting more substance and hopefully elegance to them, so.
I have one additional comment. One of the things I think is important is that we ensure that with any of these design concepts that we're mindful of our senior population. We want to be able to, we want them to be able to enjoy what is being developed. So I would encourage the design team to think about any specific needs that you can think of that our senior folks might be able to appreciate as well, since our senior population is growing.
Good point, absolutely.
I just want to add, you asked, you asked earlier about other people that should be included, and I'm glad Commissioner Woods brought that up, because I think having some representatives from the, from the senior population would be extremely valuable in this, and on the flip side, high-school-age input. I think both those populations have, you know, are going to have a little different perspective on this, or maybe the same, who knows? But I think it's important to hear from both of those populations, especially if we want this to be really a place that's used by everyone. So I think, you know, maybe selectively looking at some senior groups to provide input and also some high school or maybe even younger, but definitely high-school-age input.
Good point, thank you. Another group that should be consulted are the existing business owners, not the building owners, but the businesses that may be renting. I recall that at the conversation, City Council was having, when we were doing the redesign of the town center, being able to retain those businesses was one of the points that came up, especially the ones that are in parts of the town center that lends itself to more affordable, smaller kinds of shops and businesses and so forth. We don't want to price them out. And also, you know, we are speculating that some businesses are going to be able to have outside seating and those kinds of things, and I'm sure that will be the case. Some of the existing businesses may have some ideas about how to make that really effective and efficient and more workable, just some thoughts.
I know that I am the one who was concerned about the time limit, but as staff, I think I would like to ask one follow-up question if anybody has any input on. Originally, it was going to be whether or not we should leave the technology as the third concept or go with a different one, because I wasn't hearing much support for it, but I did hear good advocacy from Aaron Woods and didn't necessarily hear that that wasn't the right concept. But what I'm curious about is if we flip to that slide, Ben, is whether any of you have any thoughts on maybe how it could be refined or additional thoughts or things within it that you do like that we could focus more on as we kind of develop these concepts further for the next phase of public input?
I think some of those issues came up. Some of the new technology that we are going to see more and more of needs to be supported, light charging stations and so forth. Personally, I like those river pebble seating areas. I can see that that would be a, an attractive area for younger crowds, and who knows, maybe even older crowds. But there are elements of design in all of these, as I think Commissioner Woods mentioned, that are really attractive and could be used, and parts of the town center will have different functions. The promenade, for example, is probably going to have
Extremely important that we have Wi-Fi throughout the city, and whether it's 5G or whatever the next reiteration is, but I believe that our residents will be looking for that, and we should want to offer that. So I just want to put that forward, since that's not in any of the documentation.
And I guess from my perspective, to me, technology and a technological architecture don't have to go hand-in-hand. You don't have to have only charging stations, charging stations in area where there's technological innovation theme. You can do that in the agriculture, you can do that in the River Organic as well. It doesn't force you to be in that theme to have those features. One thing I was thinking about as we were going through the conversation is, you know, maybe it is more of a zone area. Because town center is so large, you know, maybe the main street area has the Ag Legacy theme, your Emerald Chain is more of a River Organic, and you can have those themes, you know, intersecting each other and still utilize all of them in specific areas without necessarily being out of place. It's not that you're having, you know, one, then the other, then the other, then the other, but more of, I guess, a general graduation as you go throughout different areas.
Anybody else? Very good.
All right. Well, thank you again, everyone, for your input and spending a little bit of extra time. We'll certainly be keeping you apprised of the project process, and I think we'll see you again formally several times in 2021, so I'm looking forward to those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Ms. Batia?
Yes, Chair Masbah, thank you very much. So our next agenda item is middle housing and Wilsonville project. And I know the team needs to switch out online and everything else, but I probably have enough to say to fill that time. This project connects back to House Bill 2001. I actually spent most of today in the LCDC hearing on House Bills 2001 and 2003. They are adopting the administrative rules for both of those bills. They adopted the rules for House Bill 2003 today. House Bill 2001, they have asked for one more meeting of the Rulemaking Advisory Committee to work through a few last issues. So we look forward to those being adopted, hopefully in December. It's been an exciting process to track, there's a lot there. So as you know, House Bill 2001 is a large trigger for the project that's before you tonight. It's the primary trigger and the main driver of the timeline associated with this program. However, as you know, we recently adopted However, as you know, we recently adopted the city's first equal housing strategic plan, which will also heavily influence the revision of our development code and our comprehensive plan as it relates to residential land uses, and how we increase housing diversity, the inclusivity of our neighborhoods, housing affordability, and increased middle housing in the city of Wilsonville. So it's not a small task that's before you tonight. This is just the first step of many. I know that Daniel Polly, the project manager for this, has a number of work sessions planned out for you through 2021. We're going to be diving deep into the code and into the comprehensive plan. And luckily, we have an amazing team that's supporting this work, and it will help you to walk through it, kind of meeting by meeting. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Daniel Polly, Planning Manager, who is the project manager for this, and he'll introduce the team that is here tonight to walk you through the very first work session on the code audit.
Thank you, Miranda, and I know how much this commission loves getting into details of residential code with me, so I look forward to more fun.
Dan, would you please hold on a second?
Sure.
Commissioner, have a line, can you take the chair for a few minutes? I'll be back soon. Thank you.
All right. So we did talk about this a bit before. We briefed the commission back in last December on the, on the new state statutes, and then we talked about the scope of this project back in February. And just, the basic is, is that there needs to be duplexes on every lot, or allow duplexes on every lot that allow single family, and also allow what we call higher metal housing, such as triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and townhouses in areas zoned for single-family residential. And we'll get into some of the nuance of those as the evening and the year progresses. Also want to acknowledge, I mean, Wilsonville does have a history of a variety of housing that we're building on with this project, as we looked into both new growth areas in the future and change in existing areas of the city. So since we last talked, we've done quite a bit of work. Staff started an effort to audit the comprehensive plan and development code, and then we selected a consultant and had them further audit that, and that is the main part of our presentation tonight, and along with some preliminary suggestions of how to meet the statute and the anticipated rules. In January, we'll go forward, and this, kind of where we're going to go then after tonight, is January, we will discuss an audit of master plans, such as the, particularly the Frog Pond Master Plan, West Master Plan, as well as begin discussions on siting and design standards. We will then have a series of work sessions, along with public outreach, in the next year, leading to what we're calling a hearings-ready package of amendments by May. Then, following that, we'll have additional work sessions as needed, and followed by the hearings process with a goal of having everything adopted by the end of 2021, if not before. And Miranda mentioned that during this year that we've also been heavily involved with the rulemaking, which has been a process, and really, we've been keeping close tabs on that and how it's going to interact with what we're doing, and have really offered our feedback in the rulemaking process based on how we see it playing out in different areas of Wilsonville and on the ground. But at this point, we do have enough direction of where the rules are going to confidently move forward, even though they won't be finalized till early next month. And again, I'd like to thank the commission in advance for all the hard work you're going to be doing on this. With that, I'd like to introduce the consultant team, which is led by Angelo Planning Group. Faces you will see is Planner Kate Rogers and Senior Project Management Manager Joe Dills. Others involved include Mr. Weber, again, that you just heard from, along with others on his team at Sarah Architects, including Ross Detterman and Emma Quinn Smith. Also, some folks that you've worked with before from Echo Northwest, Becky Hewitt and Tyler Bump are involved in this project. So this project, this project team in whole really knows Wilsonville, as well as has been involved in the rulemaking process as consultants to the state, and so they know kind of the rules and the code really well, is in addition. So it's a great team that I think will be a great support to the city as we move through this process. So with that, I'll hand it over to Kate with Angelo Planning Group to talk through our topic for tonight.
Hey, thank you, Dan, and I'm going to share my screen, but actually, while I'm doing that, I think Joe Dills is going to take the sort of introductory role to our presentation.
Thanks, sorry, Joe, yes. I remember that now.
No worries. Yeah. Hi, everybody. I've met a few of the commissioners over the years, good to see you again, and nice to meet the ones also on the commission that we'll be working with. I just have two very quick introductory remarks here. The first is, this is obviously a code update, and so it involves a lot of detail. So thanks in advance for your patience with all of the details. What we've learned over the years is that it's also a bit of a search for those details, those standards that really matter, and in this case, will matter towards the delivery of more middle housing on the ground, make it more feasible, and actually make a difference towards the city's housing policies and goals. So that's one. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, Kate will describe for you kind of what we're calling the three lenses of review for the code. Do we comply? How do we comply with the state rules? Secondly, how do we make this practical and feasible for the development community so that things can actually be built? And then finally, how do we make it equitable for increasing the affordability of housing in Wilsonville? So I wanted to encourage you to help us, as collectively, we all search for how do we achieve those three goals. We're pretty versed in the compliance end, but we want to tap into your knowledge on the feasibility and equitability side. And then, as I started out saying, tap into your sense of what are the code standards that will really make a difference for middle housing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kate.
All right. Thank you, Joe, for that intro. And I should point out that there is a toddler in my house, I have a small house, so I'm not sure how much of toddler sounds are coming through, but I apologize in advance for that, only so much I can do about that. So thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to talk to you all about our initial work on the middle housing code update. I think you've already gotten kind of an intro of what we're talking about tonight, but this is the comprehensive plan and code audit work. And the sort of two primary goals were to assess the regulatory land use barriers to development of middle housing in Wilsonville, and then to identify where amendments might be needed to comply with House Bill 2001. So that's what we're talking about tonight. And the focus of tonight's discussion will really be on the key issues that are identified in the staff report that's in your packet, and also highlighted in the memo that you received. So the memo talks a lot about, gives a lot of sort of detailed information, a lot of nuts and bolts, kind of nitty-gritty stuff about code updates in particular. But we really want to focus in on some of these key areas where we're seeking some initial policy direction from the planning commission. So first, so Joe already sort of introduced this notion of the three lenses that we're applying, the project team is applying to the code update process. So first, you know, of course, we need to make sure that Wilsonville is complying with the new state laws and with the emerging administrative rules. And for the most part, these rules are pretty prescriptive, so to a large extent, they will be kind of driving the city's response and code update response. The second lens that we're using is usability and practicality. So it's really important that the city's middle housing regulations not only, you know, are meeting the state's minimum requirements, but that they are functional and usable by developers, and will, you know, lead to on-the-ground sort of development of middle housing. So part of this is making sure that standards do not discourage middle housing development by causing unreasonable cost or delay. And that's a phrase that's used in HB 2001, it's really kind of baked into the requirements of the bill and the rules. So, and that'll be a really important consideration as we move forward in this project. And this also means sort of looking at where the regulatory barriers are to development of middle housing, and trying to remove those barriers as much as we can, and even encouraging middle housing, you know, where that makes sense. And then the third lens that we're applying is this, you know, supporting the city's equitable housing incomes, sorry, outcomes, having to do with income. So, you know, the strategic plan calls for production of more diverse housing types in more parts of the city, housing that's accessible to all income levels. So as a key part of our work in this area, it'll be to consider how middle housing regulations will affect housing affordability. So jumping right into our first key issue, the question is, should the city allow duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes to be detached on a lot? So the draft administrative rules give cities the flexibility to choose how these housing types are defined, to some extent. So they can either limit the definition to just attached units, or can also allow detached units in addition to attached. So the Wilsonville code currently defines duplexes as two attached units. The city does not currently have definitions for triplexes or quadplexes specifically, but there is an existing definition for multifamily dwellings, which would include triplexes and quadplexes, three or more units on a lot. And that definition does state that units could be either attached or detached. So there is some precedent in the code for allowing multiple detached units on a lot. So thinking about some, sort of the pros and cons of these two approaches. On the pro side, allowing detached units, for one thing, it promotes preservation of existing single-family dwellings, if we're thinking about development in an infill situation, because it would allow for the creation of, for instance, a triplex by adding two units to a backyard. You know, otherwise, development of middle housing for infill purposes would often require demolition of an existing home, and that, you know, adds quite a bit of cost to the process, and is usually, you know, not desirable to the community to see a lot of demolitions. Allowing detached units would also provide builders with some options on challenging sites where, you know, an attached structure might not be feasible. So for example, it would allow greater flexibility for preservation of existing trees, dealing with topographic constraints and site challenges. It would also provide some options to convert existing garages, for instance, into, say, an additional unit to build above the garage, to tear down the garage potentially and put units in its place. And, you know, detached triplexes, quadplexes, duplexes might also be more likely to resemble smaller, single-family homes, more so than just a single building with multiple units, and so they may fit in well with the character of existing neighborhoods. So on the con side, you know, the sort of conventional understanding of this type of housing is that these are multiple units in a single building, so we're kind of dealing with that, that issue, what most people think of, and this is also how a lot of jurisdictions currently define these housing types. And also, allowing detached units would add some complexity to the code, because it would, you know, need to address these different situations, especially around design standards. So for instance, the code would need to address whether the same design standards would apply to a unit at the rear of the site as compared to the front of the site. So those types of issues would need to be considered. Just to point out a couple of examples, the city of Bend has been kind of an early adopter of some middle housing provisions, and Ben's code currently allows duplexes and triplexes to be either attached or detached. So that's an example of an allowance in the code today. Also, the state's draft model code for middle housing, which our firm, APG, has been helping DLCD to write, the model code does allow these housing types to be detached, so it allows that flexibility. So based on these examples and considerations, our preliminary recommendation is to allow detached units. But we would really like to hear your feedback on this item, so I'm going to pause for a moment here and open it up to discussion and questions.
Ron, you want to continue, Chair?
If you're back, I'm happy to let you take over again.
Okay. Well, commissioners, any, any observations on this question? Let's start with Commissioner Millen.
Yeah, I guess I'm still struggling a little bit with envisioning this, and I don't know why, I'm just, I'm struggling with the concept. It's like, how is, how is a triplex a detached, is it three separate buildings then? And that's what the, kind of the little diagram showed, and I, I'm sorry, I'm just struggling with the overall concept on this, you know, it's like, I can't envision it. To me, then, you're sort of building three separate units, they're not really triplexes. And I don't know why that's so difficult for me, but it is. So I'm going to just stop right there, because I'm still mulling this over my own brain.
Well, that's a simple question. These triplexes don't have adjoining walls, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, if they were adjoining, then they would just be, you know, they would be attached, so.
So there's no difference between them and like, an ADA, I mean, a detached, you know, the...
ADU.
ADU, yeah, not eighty, eighty years. So there's really no difference then?
Well, ADUs have some size limitations in the current code, so this would most likely not have at least the same size limitation. So, but I mean, that is a good example of the type of thing that I think a lot of cities think works well, is to allow a detached accessory dwelling. So this would basically allow, you know, one, two, potentially three detached units, and would not have those same size constraints.
So I guess, Kate, the question I've got for you is, why would we call them detached plexes, if really all we're saying is that we're allowing multiple dwelling units on the same lot?
Yeah, that's a great point. So I think in the definition, it would say something like, the units could be either attached or detached. We wouldn't refer to them as detached plexes necessarily, we would just say, you know, a triplex is three units on a lot in any configuration, and then it wouldn't matter whether they were attached or detached.
But the plex, sort of, part of it, the duplex, the triplex, is attached, that's the whole definition of it. And that's where I'm struggling, is why do we need to keep the plex in there and just say, on a piece of property, you can have multiple dwelling units, and they can be either attached or detached?
That's an interesting point, yeah. I think there's nothing in the bill that said, or in the rules that says you have to call them a triplex necessarily, as long as you're allowing the same thing.
I think, I mean, they do have the, HB 2001 does define them specifically, like these different middle housing types, so that kind of drives some of these definitions that may end up not making the most sense in the end, but yeah.
So does it matter, though, what we call them in terms of when we start talking about, you know, setbacks and those types of things, you know, individual units versus a duplex that's attached, maybe the setbacks or other considerations start to become more important or more limiting then? Is that a possibility, why we're using this type of language?
Well, I do think you're getting at part of the consideration. Well, I do think you're getting at part of the consideration, which is that, yeah, some of the standards will have to acknowledge the fact, if, you know, multiple detached units are allowed, the standards would have to sort of address that option. So setbacks would have to, you know, be not just for the, the single building on the site, but it would have to be for potentially multiple buildings on the site.
Which might make it more complex to figure that out. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And really, I think the, what we can do is look a little further into the semantic side. Do we have to stay with the plex language because it's used in the state statute? The core of the question that we're putting before you is, what is the outcome that you think is the right outcome? We can get the language, and we can even get the standards tuned accordingly, but is it a desirable way to go where the outcome would be two or three separate new units on the same lot? Or should those new units be attached? That's really the essence of it.
Or can they be either?
Or either, yes.
My question is, centers around cost. And I would imagine, when we look at these, let's say if we're looking at three separate houses on a lot, which have four walls versus the attached, which would not, and of course, the cost for building those, those attached versus detached, would be less, I would assume. So the question is, I'm seeing here, should we allow these three types of units? And we're talking about the deep, the triplexes right now. It seems to me, from a desirability standpoint, a lot of new homeowners, young homeowners, would probably be amenable to either, whether it's attached or detached, from a cost perspective, because that's what a lot of them are going to be looking at, is the cost. So as far as, from an aesthetical look, the, the three units, and I'm not gonna call them triplexes right yet, I'll get away from that, but the three units, from an aesthetic standpoint, would be okay from the look, because it would look just like any other house, I would assume, but smaller in size, both, you know, width specifically, maybe not so much length. So it seems to me that if we're keeping with the aesthetics of the area, whether it's three houses on a lot, or we're dealing with duplexes, I'm not so sure about the quadplex, that's a new one for me, but just the duplexes and the, the two houses on the lot and the three houses on the lot, from the standpoint of the cost and aesthetics, I think is a, is one that comes to mind for me, and that's, that's a concern I would have.
I think that comment is really helpful, Commissioner Woods, and I think it might help others to think through, because if you think just about the construction of the two options, either three detached or three attached, that probably rings true in terms of cost. But what we may see is, with the changes in this code and the bill, is that you most likely have an existing single family on a larger lot, and there's going to be infill. And so actually tearing down the existing single family could have quite a bit of cost, and it may actually be more advantageous for somebody to come in and just do one or two infill houses on the lot, so long as they can meet the setbacks and other standards. And that putting those two additional units may be easier for them. It may also help us to preserve existing single family that might be more affordable, depending, you know, it just depends on where it is, because it wouldn't be a brand-new structure, which typically is more expensive to purchase. So that might just help the commission think through how this could look and build out differently in different neighborhoods, really dependent upon different lots.
Any other comments, Commissioner Greenfield?
I have a question about how this, well, two questions. One is how detached, multiple units on a lot differs from a cluster housing. And the second question is whether there is a possibility of subdividing the property into separate lots.
So, yeah, it's a really good question about the difference between cluster housing or cottage clusters. There could potentially be some overlap, and the city could choose to make the definition clear in certain ways. I mean, for one thing, cottage clusters, as defined by HB 2001, have to be limited to a 900-square-foot building footprint, and there has to be the shared common courtyard space. You know, a detached quad development could also have those features. So, you know, for one thing, a cottage cluster could have a minimum of five units to differentiate it. Or it could also be sort of up to the applicant to choose whether it wants to permit a development as, say, a detached quadplex or a cottage cluster with four units. So there's like, sort of, a couple of different options to go in that, in that sense. And, I'm sorry, your second question was?
Second question had to do with the possibility of subdivision into separate lots.
Uh, that is a question, I might have to defer to Dan on that one. I'm not sure what the city's procedures would be if someone developed a detached triplex, and then they wanted to subdivide it at a later point.
Yeah, that, that's a code question that we really haven't ironed out yet. Because, yeah, it gets, because there are, you know, does it count as density once it's on a different lot, where, you know, a triplex, adding the two units doesn't count towards the density on the property, so, or for the subdivision or master plan? So it's, it's a good question, that if we do allow probably more than allowing detached, allowing subdivision of these middle housing creates a lot of code complexity that it would take some effort to iron out.
Sorry about that. Any other questions? Yeah, I think from my perspective, I think if, if the city is serious about middle housing, then we should give the flexibility, i.e. allowing detached units. If we're not super serious about it, then go strictly with the letter of HB 2001 and say it's gotta be attached. And, and my, my preference is give that flexibility.
Commissioner Zosik? You are muted.
Sorry about that. I would, so that, I think that allowing the flexibility would allow for more middle housing to be developed, especially on lots that are currently wanting to preserve the single-family house. You know, if you've got the space for a couple, but maybe you can't fit a row of houses in, going with the, allowing the detached would be, would be the best way to do it.
Okay.
Did I misunderstand? I thought that, that the HB 2001 allowed for both detached and detached, attached.
That, that is correct. So at a minimum, the city will need to allow attached units, but then it also has the, the option to, in addition, allow the detached units.
I would see no reason to restrict it to one or the other, but allow both, either.
I am okay, and in fact, I would encourage the flexibility. There's a couple of things here, though. It seems to me that we are balancing densification through middle housing in Wilsonville with equity and affordability. And it, I'm wondering whether or not the tendency is going to be to want to have detached duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, just because it is more like a single-family unit, and that that would have actually encouraged gentrification instead of affordability and those kinds of things. It's just a question in my mind. The second point I would like to make is, if we are going to keep, because it's easier to update our code and so forth, if you're going to keep the terminology duplexes and triplexes and so forth, we need to do a lot of educating of the residents, because I do not want it to look like a, kind of, a fast trick that says, we, we zone this area for duplexes, and then now you're gonna have single-family houses there, and people are gonna be up in arms. That's not what we had agreed to. So I think this will, if we keep the nomenclature, we should make sure that we are disabusing people from the concept that this was a fast trick that was pulled on neighborhoods.
That's a really good point, yeah. Being very clear about what we're talking about going forward, if, if this is the approach that the city wants to take. Yeah, thank you.
Well, I think just one more point, and that is, are we really looking at this in, through the lens of making more affordable housing? I mean, in, or, I mean, I know we need to meet the bill's requirements, but our, our goals seem to be more in line with making more affordable housing. So I'm wondering how building these individual units helps meet that goal, just because of the cost of building things. And building individual units just seems to be, that that would be more costly, and, again, I don't know, I don't know if we're trying to balance apples and oranges here, and that, that may, you know, we may have to think about that in a longer term.
And maybe analyze it. That's why I was very interested in hearing our planning director's statement, that you may have three new buildings there that cost more, but the old house on this large lot, then is gonna be more affordable, perhaps. But I wanna see, I wanna make sure that, that whatever we do, and I don't have any problem with some neighborhoods having these new houses that are a little bit fancier because there's land there, but I wanna make sure we don't start losing and not gaining on the affordability aspects of our equitable housing plan. And I know that that is on the, on the radar of this, this work as well, where they're trying to balance the two.
Yeah, absolutely. And just, you know, I, I think allowing middle housing in and of itself is not gonna make housing affordable. I think new construction tends to be more expensive than existing homes, but, you know, allowing flexibility to add as many units as possible will, you know, increase housing supply, and increasing housing supply, sort of, over time, brings housing costs down. So that's, that's kind of one of the, the sort of lenses we're bringing to the sort of affordability consideration.
Very good. Yeah, sounds like we have our direction on, on this one, Kate, so.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. All right, so we will move on to the next key hot topic, which is cottage clusters on individual lots. So should the city allow cottage clusters on separate individual lots? So HB 2001 provides a pretty specific definition of cottage clusters, which is groupings of detached dwelling units, each with a footprint of less than 900 square feet, that includes a common courtyard. So these are some, some examples of what that can look like. And the draft rules, the administrative rules, go on to state that cities can allow cottage clusters to be located on a single lot or an individual lot. So there's, there's some flexibility to choose one or the other, or both. So our initial assumption is, is that Wilsonville will most likely allow at least cottage clusters to be units on a single lot. And this is kind of the most straightforward approach to cottage cluster development. And so really, the question at hand is whether we want to allow units also on individual lots. So, again, there's kind of some pros and cons on both sides. The advantage of allowing individual lots, units on individual lots, is that this is often a sort of more desirable path for builders. So this allows units to be owned, sold and owned fee simple, which means that a homeowner will own the building and also the land underneath it. So as opposed to, say, condominium-style ownership. So, and then any shared tracks that are, you know, shared open space areas and shared parking areas, those would be owned in common. So by allowing sort of multiple ownership and potentially rental options, so units on a single lot could, could either be rented out, or they could be owned, again, as condos. But then units on individual lots could be sold fee simple, so the lot is sold with the house. So this provides more paths to potential homeownership. The sort of main downside for the city is that it's gonna add pretty significant complexity to the code, because there will need to be a clear and objective path and standards for cottage cluster land divisions, not just sort of citing standards and design standards, but also the land division procedure and, and requirements. So, you know, this, this will be somewhat challenging to write, and it'll need to address things like shared open space tracks, shared parking areas, potentially shared community buildings, cross-access easements, all these things that will make it, you know, more complex than a standard kind of subdivision. And, you know, this is not an insurmountable challenge for the city and for us as consultants, but it's, it's worth noting. A couple examples, kind of, other examples on both sides for how cities approach this issue, so the city of Oregon City, they allow cottage clusters on either individual lots or on a single lot, so they offer both, both paths. City of Milwaukee allows cottage cluster units on individual lots only. And city of Tigard only allows units on a single lot. So it's, we've seen examples on both sides. So based on these examples and some of these considerations, I think to maximize flexibility and to provide these multiple paths to homeownership, we would recommend, at least initially, to allow both situations. So that's our thought, but I will stop now and open it up for questions and discussion.
Who wants to go first?
Well, there's a, a good example in our neighborhood, in Canyon Creek Meadows, on Wood Avenue. There are several cottage clusters with, generally, I think, three or four cottages, and they're very attractive. I don't know whether they're singly allotted, or whether they're, whether they're on a single lot, or whether they're individual lots. And it doesn't seem to me to make any difference in the effect. If it makes, makes for more affordability, I'm all for it, and I don't see any reason to, to prevent it. This whole discussion goes to the, to my question, my previous question. I really can't see how this differs from the notion of multiplex, but I, I think that the maximum flexibility is the way to go here as, as in other regards.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'll follow it, Terry, if you don't mind. Chair Metzger?
Go ahead.
I tend to agree, and I have that same mental challenge with, with the plexes and the why, why wouldn't you allow individual lots there as well? To me, HB 2001 seems to kind of be blowing up our previous conception of... To me, HB 2001 seems to kind of be blowing up our previous conception of what density was. And so we're trying to to maintain our existing zoning and density restriction while still allowing a shoehorn of a bunch of densities into what was already there. And and so whether it's a cottage cluster or whether it's larger homes, whether or not we have individual lots or separate lots, I don't care. Give give the maximum flexibility that we can. And if it creates a one-time pain from a code development standpoint, sorry, Mr. Pauli, it's just going to be some more work for you.
Hey, I look forward to it.
Clearly, this is not Dan's night. Mr. Wood, do you have any remarks?
No, you know, I would agree with what everyone else has said. And also, you know, if I heard correctly, the recommendation of allowing for both situations would would it make it easier for the city in their code writing or rewriting? But I think the maximum flexibility is the route to go, period. And it allows for both situations, either or. So I'm I'm a proponent for both situations.
Thank you. Mr. Chiselski?
I would agree with allowing for both. My only reservation is with the individual lots, that it is going to drive up prices and costs. And are we going to be pricing out new homeowners and lower-income folks that maybe won't be able to afford them? Would be my only concern.
Mr. Miller?
I say allow for both situations. I think I think this is going to be, like so many other things, it's going to be so market-driven that I think we need to allow the flexibility. I think actually that the on a, you know, single lot might make it more affordable, but we'll have to see how that plays out.
Well, the flexibility, to me, allows, for example, for the city or a housing authority to buy a lot and develop one of these on a single lot on an affordable basis. So the flexibility will will help affordability potentially if we have the political will to make those units available and build them and so forth. I am all for flexibility, with apologies to Mr. Pauli. But the the issue I want Dan at some point to perhaps tell us about is, does he know of specific areas or lots or neighborhoods where one version or another would would create a problem that cannot be addressed through through a just simple and clear set of standards? And is there any way to to deal with that? But I think we're too early in the process here to get to that point. I just I'm giving Dan a heads up. Anybody else has any comments? I don't see any hands up. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clear direction on that topic. That's very helpful. Okay. So our last key issue is, it's a little bit of a complicated one, and I'm I will ask Dan to step in as needed if he needs to correct me on anything that I get wrong or add some some nuance or detail to this topic. But so this issue is about the residential agricultural holding zone, or R A H. And the question is, how should the city address middle housing on smaller lots that are zoned R A H that have a residential comprehensive plan designation? So this zone is intended to be a holding zone to preserve future future potential for urban-level development. So when a development is proposed on an R A H-zoned lot, the property has to go through a rezone process to be consistent with the underlying comprehensive plan designation. But a key exception here is that a single-family home can be developed on an R A H lot without having to go through a zone change. So much of, as you can see on the map here, kind of, much of the Old Town neighborhood is zoned R A H and has a residential comp plan designation. And because the existing homes in the Old Town neighborhood, you know, tend to be older and smaller, they typically have a lower improvement to land value ratio, which means this area may be more likely to see redevelopment, including development of middle housing. I should note that, you know, if this doesn't just apply to Old Town, there are other parts of the city that have these smaller, meaning under-two-acre lots that are zoned R A H and, you know, could be subject to similar sort of requirements. But really focusing on Old Town here because of this increased potential for middle housing development in that area. So this requirement for a zoning map amendment as part of development is a pretty significant barrier to middle housing. So this requires approval from both the Development Review Board and from City Council. This adds time and cost to the development process and potentially introduces uncertainty to the process, which increases risk for applicants. Also, for neighbors who receive a notice about a development application and a rezone, it may kind of present a false sense of ability to influence the outcomes of that process because there's typically only one rezoning option based on the comp plan. And the DRB and the City Council would really have very few legal grounds to deny a rezoning request that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So these are some some major barriers. So the question is, how can the city increase housing options on these smaller R A H-zoned lots by producing these barriers to development? So the project team has identified four initial options to consider that we'd like your input on. So the first option is just to rezone these smaller residential lots to be consistent with their comp plan designation. So rezoning was recommended in the Old Town Neighborhood Plan, which was adopted, I think, in 2011, but it did not move forward at that time. This would be kind of the most straightforward approach to addressing this process barrier because it would basically remove that process barrier altogether because the the land would just then be residentially zoned. And this would, you know, deliver on one of these actions that was identified in the neighborhood plan. But this might not be favorable to some existing Old Town residents because this would have the effect of allowing, you know, middle housing development without having to go through any further public process or noticing process once that development occurs because it would be entitled and permitted outright. So so that's the first option. The second option is is also rezoning, but it's kind of a unique twist on it, which would be to conditionally rezon the lots, but it would require property owner approval. So again, this would rezone the residential R A H lots to be consistent with the the comprehensive plan designation. But the rezoning would only take effect if the property owner gave their written approval for it. So this would kind of do the same thing as the legislative rezoning and removing the process barrier, but it might be a little more politically palatable than the sort of straight-up legislative zoning because, you know, each individual property owner will could keep the current zoning designation if they chose to do that. So that's our second thought. The third idea would be to just amend the R A H zone to permit middle housing development without a rezone. So similar to how a single-family home could be developed without having to rezone, this would allow duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, et cetera, in the same way. So this would be a pretty straightforward approach, but it might not be consistent with what the intent of this zone is, which is really to be kind of a holding zone. It's not meant to apply forever. It's meant to hold that potential for the future urban development. So it might be, yeah, like I said, not consistent with the intent of the zone. And then the fourth option to think about is to simply streamline or expedite the process for zoning map amendments specifically for this zone. And it could be specific, say, to the Old Town area potentially. So an example of that, of an expedited rezone process, is in the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District, where a request for a zoning map amendment that's consistent with the comp plan designation is reviewed by the City Council without needing to go through the DRB or Planning Commission review. So this would, it wouldn't entirely remove the process barrier to middle housing, but it would at least simplify the process and reduce the review time, most likely. So these are the four options we would like you to think about. We don't necessarily have an initial recommendation at this point, at least that I'm aware of. So we welcome any input on any of these options. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them or ask Dan to answer them for you.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah. On the conditional rezoning, number two here, what would be the advantage of a property owner giving approval to do that?
So the idea is, is that you wouldn't, you know, you're not rezoning people's property where they've lived for 20 years and they're going to live for another 20 years. It's so you're not, so you're giving them some opportunity to to have a say about what happens to their property in terms of the zoning, where a conditional rezoning is they essentially have to acknowledge and say, yes, I want it rezoned before anything happens. And so if they don't want it to change, it doesn't. If they do, then it then it can. I do want to reiterate that, you know, any of these, you know, really, there's, it wouldn't stop middle lot, let's say in Old Town or in any of these other areas, from having middle housing built. It'd still be allowed. It would just make the process longer and more costly. I also want to mention in the R A H zone that, in general, what the rules say is, in areas that to be in areas zoned where these middle housing rules apply, you have to both have residential zoning and the comprehensive plan has to say that it's residential. So in these other areas where of R A H where it has a comprehensive plan of residential, of, sorry, commercial or industrial, or even larger lot, larger lots that are planned for future higher-density or more dense residential, it really is a mute point because those stay as just a single family with an ADU allowed because the middle housing rules don't apply to them. It gets into these areas where, you know, you have these small lots that aren't intended to be re-divided anymore in the future, that for whatever reason have this R A H zoning. And what do we do with them? So I is that I hope that provides some more information, and I really appreciate Kate and her level of understanding of this on short order, since it's somewhat complex. So thanks.
Mr. Wood, did that answer your question?
Somewhat. It seems to me that in the explanation and Dan, thanks for that point of middle housing could still or would still be placed in your R A H, R A H zone of Old Town. As you said, it would take longer and be more costly. So none of these options would prevent that, it sounds like.
Correct.
Well, yes. Yeah, just to clarify that point, I think, just to make sure I I'm not misunderstanding what you're saying. I think the idea with these four options is to try to reduce those requirements that make the process more costly or take longer. So if we didn't do any of these four things, middle housing could still be built, but as Dan said, the process could could take longer. Yeah.
Dan, in the Old Town, what is the reserve, what is it being reserved for? Higher-density residential?
No. So the comprehensive plan calls for essentially residential of the same density with with one exception that's currently under review, which is an oddball lot, which we could write a whole book on what's unique about that lot. But so for the rest of these, you know, 50 by 100 lots throughout Old Town, it wouldn't really be preserved. I think maybe we could do some more research on why, back when the current zoning was adopted, why it was elected to put its R A H rather than R-zone or something else. I'm not really clear on why that was. But it's not meant to, as the rest of the R A H, to provide for the future development of something else.
Well, that's very helpful to me because I'm remembering when we had the hearing with the Old Town residents, a lot of them, the issue wasn't that they wanted to have a say in how they developed their own property. It sounded to me like they wanted to have a say how their neighbor developed his property. So the second option here, I'm not sure is going to be reassuring to those who had trepidations about what Old Town would become if there wasn't a design standard on it and all the rest of the stuff that we worked hard to to generate. Is this really only that one large lot that is the issue here and the rest of them are going to be fine? If that's the case, then it should be an easier kind of a decision.
So it's not even really a large lot? And that large lot is actually has a current application in and would, if that ends up being approved, would be a mute point anyway. So so, yeah, I mean, generally, it applies to these regular-sized lots in Old Town. And so and, you know, it just between one and two, it it may just take some outreach to see what the neighborhood's more comfortable with. And just keeping two in kind of the back pocket if it, for some reason, works better for them.
So your approach is we don't have any choice, this is state law. Which one of these are you okay with? Is that how you're approaching that outreach?
Will be, it'll be a wider conversation than that.
Okay. Very good. Any other points, commissioners, please?
Yeah, Dan, is there a financial difference between the city managing option one and option two?
You know, I think the only, it's minimal, I would think, is the cost of recording an additional document at the county when pending an owner's approval. So you might have to pay an attorney for an hour or two and then a title company. But wouldn't it be a substantial cost? Opposed to, you know, going through a zoning, a rezoning through, I mean, that involves getting planners involved and extensive process, waiting periods, and a lot of, you know, getting legal descriptions drawn up and quite a bit of cost.
Okay. Yeah, my my preference would be option one or option two. I think either of those will make these R A H zones be equitable with the rest of the city and the fact that they don't have to go through a bunch of extra hoops to allow this middle housing to occur. And so that's I think why I'm more in favor of those two versus the last two.
Thank you. Commissioner Greenfield?
I have to confess, I'm still quite confused. How is it the R A H zone escapes the requirements of HB 2001? Isn't it already a requirement that we permit middle housing for any residential area?
Yeah, so it's it's a
Dan, I can try to
You wanted, okay, go ahead, Kate.
I can, I can try to answer it. So I think it's a little bit of a question mark in my mind, but so the the law says that lands that are zoned for residential use, that allow a single-family detached dwelling, must also allow middle housing. So
Wouldn't that include R A H?
Yeah, I think that that is our current interpretation, that the R A H lots that have that residential comprehensive plan designation comprehensive plan designation would probably need to comply. I think we might want to get the state to kind of sign off on that interpretation. But, yeah, that is, that's kind of our working assumption in this area. So, I think the, the question really is then, would it just be, so, I mean, that is where sort of option three comes in, is we would simply amend the R A H zone to allow those middle housing types consistent with HB 2001.
In which case, we're amending R A H zone to do that in compliance with HB 2001?
Correct. Right. So, that is...
Seems to be the easiest.
The complexity...
There you go.
Yeah, the complexity there is, you then end up really with two R A H zones. You have the R A H zone for the rest of the city, and the R A H zone for these smaller lots. Because the, so, it's, on land zoned residential does not include land that currently allows single-family, but is, does not have comprehensive plan designation for, for commercial, for residential, or, you know, we, this is something that still needs to be clarified maybe with the state, but also want to apply to where you're, it's something that's designated to be a denser development, so you're trying to put, let's say, duplex on a acre and a half lot that the comprehensive plan would call for, you know, 15, 20 units on.
Got it.
So, there's, there's different cases. So, if you go with three, you end up having, because I've worked through kind of some potential texts on this, and you end up really having to break apart the R A H zone, where you have the, kind of, the, where these large lots for future development, which is the main purpose of the zone, and then these smaller lots that we wouldn't expect to be divided or use changed over time.
Okay. It, just to add a thought, that's sort of a, a way to look at these choices for number three, because you could reason that having, I'll just give it a name, having a R A H town center be different and be its own thing reflects the fact that it's a place, and it's a subarea within the city, and, and has its own kind of unique plan and character and so on, as opposed to some of the other R A H lots that are maybe a little further down on Wilsonville Road, or in the east part of the city.
Joe, doing that, wouldn't you still essentially have a legislative rezoning? Because you're now essentially taking R A H and breaking it into different, you know, R A H one, R A H two? Doesn't that, doesn't that still drive enough to do essentially option one?
Yes. I mean, what I just described, I think so. Dan, weigh in here, but, uh, sort of my logic line there, trying to think it through, would in fact create a new zone designation.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, that's really the question. Do you create the, for, let's take Old Town, for example, and do you create that Old Town residential zone talked about in, in the neighborhood plan and apply it, or do you rewrite the R A H zone language to say the same thing?
But then, Dan, you were talking about the, the difficulty with that, because you have, you have, we have acreage in the city that is not, that is R A H, but is not residential.
Correct.
And so, then you have to write standards for R A H for residential and R A H for non-residential.
Correct.
So, it's, it's not as simple as you amend R A H zone to permit middle housing, and everything just works fine. You have to create a bunch of complexity in there.
Correct. That's my current understanding, yes.
Okay. My vote's still for one or two.
Commissioner Millen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really struggling with this one, because I'm trying to separate out, are we primarily talking about the R A H in Old Town, or are there so many other places that this is going to impact in the city? And I, I guess I'm not clear on that. And why did we do the R A H designation in the first place? Kind of, kind of, to me, kind of, goes into the deliberation of how do you change this? It just, I, because I was leaning towards option three, just so you, and I don't see where that causes a problem, and I, I heard some of the explanation, and I, I still don't understand why it causes a problem. I mean, it just, it says, now we can do this. And are we concerned that someone is going to put housing where it's primarily going to be, you know, commercial or, or industrial? I don't think so. I, I just, I guess I can't envision that, that happening. Now, maybe I'm not seeing it in, in all the complexity, but it, yeah, I, either one or, or three, just, you know, change it, make it kind of unilateral. I think that's the, the cleanest way to go, and, and it's easier to explain to people if it's kind of across the board, versus some other mixture of this. I mean, I, if we believe that's the right thing to do, then I think we can, we can explain to people why we're doing it.
Dan, you want to explain number, the problem with number three again? You have other areas that, that have R A H zone.
Sure.
It's not showed two residential areas, but you have other non-residential areas as well.
So, I mean, there's, there's large chunks of non-residential areas, and certainly, with any future development zone, which essentially R A H is, is you want to make sure that the development that happens isn't of such value that it's going to make the eventual redevelopment of that property, according to the comprehensive plan, economically unfeasible. This is why we keep talking about, you know, contractors establishment in Coffee Creek, is because it, it's enough development on those properties that it kind of reduces the economic incentives to develop that to urban densities. And so, the same would go for, let's say, you have a three-acre lot that's, has, that's R A H, that, you know, if you allowed a quadplex to come in on that, then that would kind of take that out for some time from the likelihood that that be redeveloped to the residential density on, per the comprehensive plan. So, you want to avoid those sort of situations. So, you do really have these two situations, the R A H zone, areas that is predominant, most of the R A H zone, is which you expect change, further land divisions, future urban development on these lots, versus these smaller lots, particularly in Old Town, where it's a single-family residence that you really don't anticipate the use changing over time. In other areas, you have that area along Montgomery Way, I, you know, in that area, I believe there's some active covenants that may restrict that, and then some other smaller lots, particularly around kind of the Wilsonville Road, Brown Road area, that it may apply to. And I believe some along Canyon Creek Road as well. So, there's, there's a smattering outside of Old Town, but primarily, the, the largest percentage that it, that we're talking about here is the Old Town lots.
Thank you. And it sounds, from your explanations, that really R A H designation in Old Town is out of place. So, what Commissioner Millen was saying, finding out the history of that may help, I think, make a definitive kind of decision. I am fine with number one. Based on all of this discussion, it seems to me that, that the R A H designation in Old Town definitely is out of place, is, you know, it doesn't make sense. So, changing it to what it's supposed to be makes sense. But, that's just one person. Anybody else?
I'm fine with it, too.
Okay. Commissioner Greenfield. Commissioner Millen, was that explanation helpful to you?
It, it was. And I, you know, when I think about, you know, the difference between, like, down Montgomery, the kind of housing that's already there, and the covenants that are already governing that area, versus Old Town, versus a few little, you know, plots of land here and there, I think that, yeah, it makes a lot more sense to just go with number one.
Who have I not called on? Commissioner Zizinski, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about the conditional rezoning, number two. If that was the way we decided to go, and maybe, for whatever purpose, that a homeowner decided they didn't want to change to the new zoning, what happens if they go to sell their home? Does it revert to the new zoning? Does it stay the same? Do we ask the new homeowner? Like, what's, what's going to be the process for that?
The, I mean, what's in my brain, again, this is just an idea that was hatched, and I've talked to Ryan about it, and just kind of, and the consultants, Mr. Adams, our assistant city attorney, about kind of the feasibility of it. Is it, it wouldn't change anything until the property owner said, yes, I want it? So, it, the current zoning, as, as I have it in my brain now, would just stay the same across different owners, until one owner decided, I want to change it?
It's going to stay in your brain, is that to protect your, your well-being for the foreseeable future? You should make sure no bus runs over you, Dan, because you're going to lose this history, man. Any other comments? I don't see any hands up. Well, good. Let's move to the next issue.
All right. I do want to just check in, I guess, with Dan and Miranda on our, on our time, because I know we're well past our allotted time. And really, the rest of these topics are just, we don't have any presentation associated with the rest of these, it's just if folks have any other questions, or want to discuss or give feedback on any of these items, we wanted to kind of open it up. But I don't know how much time we want to actually devote to that.
I would say that...
Ms. Batey.
I would say, go ahead and finish it up. You only have a few slides. If we got, if we get stuck on anything, it's fine for us to put it in the parking lot for the next work session. So, I think it would be fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so, we really just, we just have these three slides left, and a couple topics on each slide. And like I said, I don't really have anything to present on these issues. These are kind of discussed, you know, these are really sort of more nuts-and-bulls discussions that are in your memo. But if, if folks have any questions or feedback about other housing definitions, besides the ones we've already talked about, density exceptions that are required by HB 2001, or the required review procedures, I will, I will stop there and let folks speak up.
Any question on any of those?
I'll just have to comment that the lower-left building is one of the ugliest I've ever seen.
That's, that's good feedback.
We won't allow that, Jerry.
It does, does the commission feel comfortable with their understanding of these different items, as driven by the state statute and rules?
You're going to get tested on this. I don't see anybody saying no, Dan.
Okay.
All right.
Is that reassuring?
Well, from, from this group, you know, it's a very knowledgeable group, so, doesn't surprise me that you guys are getting this, so...
That was extremely helpful for us. Okay, there's, well, we have five topics on this slide, so, just sort of generally residential development standards, so what the sort of minimum compliance rules are, that was kind of a key focus of the memo, the code audit memo, questions about design standards, and then we have specific updates identified for the Bilbois Code, for the RN Zone, which will be the Frog Pond area, and then in the Old Town Overlay Zone. So, any questions or comments on those?
I'm not seeing any hands up.
I'll, I'll add that we'll, we'll have more about Frog Pond at your next meeting when we're back, that'll be January, because, as you well know, it has a legislative master plan. So, the amendments to the master plan kind of connect to the, the code as well, so that'll be a continuing topic.
Very good.
Okay. And then our last slide is the status of old plan development approvals, and how those will accommodate middle housing, parking requirements. Those are pretty limited by the administrative rules. We have some provisions for private streets that need to be addressed, and then exceptions to site design review.
I would add, on the status of old plan development approvals, some of you may recall, we kind of got into this topic with town center and the new town center zoning, so, and we put that in a parking lot, as I recall it. And so, this kind of gets, is the same issue, which would end up potentially applying to, to that town center situation, where really, you have new rules and these old stage-two master plans, and at what point do those approved stage-two master plans, their grandfather status go away?
So, it stays in the parking lot? Is that what you're saying, Dan?
No, I mean, we're, we're looking to address it, so, this is...
Okay.
This is, I just want to call this out as a substantial, as a code edit that would have substantial impact throughout the city.
Okay.
So, no, we're driving this one now. It's out of the parking lot.
Any last comments from the commissioners?
I, I guess, Sheriff Bass, probably the only thing I would say is, I mean, it's not like the rest of the zone changes aren't going to be contentious with the, with the residents of, of Wilsonville, but I know that parking is always a very hot topic, and, and this concept of, of adding potentially a significant amount of, of new development without any consideration for additional parking requirements is, is going to be something that I could perceive as being a, a challenge to communicate to the public as a whole, and, and the limitations that we have with that.
Yes. Agreed.
I think some efforts to, like, do things like talk about, you know, garages, if they're going to count as parking, actually need to be available for parking, and things like that, consistent with kind of the previous discussions on parking, are, are some things we can do to make sure where it is only one required per unit, that, that parking is actually available, not used for something else.
Okay. Very good. Is that, is that the end of the presentation for this topic?
That is the end of the presentation. So, thank you so much, commissioners. Yeah, some really good feedback on these, on these topics. So, we will come back to you, as Joe mentioned, in January, and we will be focusing on master plans and starting to talk about setting and design standards. So, we look forward to that.
Thank you very much for all your work, and thank you to city staff for all their work, especially Dan and Miranda, who are dealing with the implications of this stuff. Okay. Ms. Batey, next.
Yes, thank you very much. We have moved into the informational section of the agenda, and tonight, we have Jordan Vance, the city's Economic Development Manager, here this evening to present an update on a new application of TIF Zone here in Wilsonville, called the Wilsonville Investment Now Program. And so, he's going to give you a quick briefing on this, and why, and, or how, what the role of the Planning Commission will be moving forward in that program. I would note that Mr. Vance will be moving, I can't remember if it's in two weeks, or shortly after that, to Australia. And so, this might be the last time you get to see him this evening at a Planning Commission meeting. So, feel free to... So feel free to pepper him with really difficult questions. I'm just teasing. I have, I have nothing else in my introduction. Go ahead and take it away, Jordan.
Okay, thank you, Miranda. Good evening, Planning Commission. Like Miranda said, my name is Jordan Vance. I'm the Economic Development Manager of the city, and I'm joined tonight by project consultant Nick Poppenook of Tiberia Solutions. And like Miranda said, we'll be giving a briefing on the new WIN program, which is a reincarnation of the TIF Zone program. So quick history on that TIF Zone program. It's a unique program to Wilsonville. I believe we're the only jurisdiction in the state to have used site-specific urban renewal for economic development. In 2013, the council approved the designation of six separate properties as individual urban renewal districts, and this was also approved by the voters. Each of these properties were referred to as tax increment financing zones or TIF zones. The TIF zones, the TIF zones use the same funding mechanism as standard urban renewal districts. However, rather than fund large-scale, long-term projects, the TIF zones were intended to provide property tax rebates as a development incentive for qualifying companies who invest in any of the six properties. Ultimately, none of the development that occurred within the TIF zones met the eligibility thresholds established for the program, and the existing TIF Zone incentive program expired in November 2019. The original approach to TIF zones had limitations as an economic development tool. First, it required identifying a handful of specific sites in advance, and therefore it was not applicable to the vast majority of a potential, of potential development sites in the city. Second, the thresholds for qualifying development were rigid and did not allow flexibility to accommodate a wider range of potential businesses. And last, each site required the adoption of an urban renewal plan. Those plans have annual administrative requirements and also require consultation with affected taxing districts to renew or extend the plans when they reach their scheduled termination date. A quick look at urban renewal in Wilsonville. So as you likely know, this has been a very important tool for infrastructure financing in our community, and we've had very positive economic results in the city from using it. We have three existing urban renewal areas that cover around 22% of the city's acreage. Two out of the three plans are winding down in the coming years, and one is just ramping up. So you see the area highlighted blue? This is our year 2000 urban renewal plan. It's funded a lot of important projects in our commercial Town Center core, and this plan is estimated to close around 2023. The area in orange is our West Side Urban Renewal Plan. It's funded infrastructure projects in our Bilbois residential neighborhood, which is nearly built out, and this, this plan is estimated to close around 2025. The last district is the light green district in our industrial expansion area in northwest Wilsonville called Coffee Creek Urban Renewal Area. This district has 225 acres meant to accommodate future employment growth and high-tech, advanced manufacturing and distribution. This district has just taken off and recently competed, completed our first infrastructure project that we think will enable development on around 80 acres in the heart of this district. So the WIN program, there's a couple differences between this and the TIF Zone program, but WIN is eligible for all property outside of these three existing urban renewal districts. So we were given direction by our city council to redesign our site-specific urban renewal program. So we spent a lot of time trying to determine how to make the program more effective, more flexible, and more, more adaptable to our current economic environment, and brought back a proposal for our urban renewal task force to review. The group, which is chaired by Councilor Akervall, provided unanimous feedback that our proposal was a good direction to take. The group, which includes impacted taxing districts like the school district, the county, the fire district, as well as private sector partners, including developers, real estate agents, local businesses, concluded that the program will make the city more competitive with business recruitment, expansion, and retention efforts. The key recommendation from the group was to incorporate additional factors into the WIN program, including consideration of diversity, equity, inclusion factors, and local Wilsonville status. Council told us to incorporate the task force's recommendations, and we came back with a final program proposal that was adopted on October 19th by city council. A couple of quick things to note about the adoption of the program. So it was not, first of all, the program, we view this as a modification to site-specific urban renewal, not a net new program. So the concept of using urban renewal tax rebates as a tool to incent business investment, that foundation remains the same, and what's different is the eligibility criteria, which we've changed to make the program more flexible. We also want to note that we didn't, we only adopted administrative rules, not any urban renewal zone or any qualifying projects. The adoption of the rules will create a valuable economic development tool for staff in marketing Wilsonville to prospective developers and businesses, especially during these very uncertain economic times. The first question I consistently get from businesses is about incentives. So this will give us a very innovative and fresh local program to talk about from a marketing standpoint to set Wilsonville apart. We won't be looking at adopting any site-specific urban renewal areas until a qualifying project comes in the door, at which point there will be a four-month process which engages, which engages the Planning Commission and includes a public hearing and a citywide notification to approve the plan. So the plan provides qualified projects with a tax rebate on the increment of their investment if all standards are met, as opposed to a tax abatement. This means that participating businesses will pay property taxes upfront and on time but receive a partial or full rebate later once they demonstrate that they have met the required thresholds. And we think the rebate versus money upfront is a more strategic way to protect public funds by verifying project investment first. So that is partially why the, the name is called Wilsonville Investment Now, because we see the investment now and then we verify it later. The eligibility criteria primarily considers new investments, new employees, and compensation of those employees. There's a whole point allocation system we've come up with that Nick will explain during his portion. We also consider DEI commitments, and there are six different categories we came up with that we think reflect the values of the community, ranging from a DEI procurement plan to a DEI workforce development plan to employer-provided childcare. So we designed a menu approach where if the applicant meets two out of the six commitments, they'll get an extra four, they'll get four extra points in their application. And this isn't required, it's just additional consideration or extra credit, as we've been referring to it. Additionally, for every year of verified operation in Wilsonville, we'll provide half a point to give extra consideration to the legacy, longtime Wilsonville employers, and that will be up to four additional points. The program will rebate 100% of TIF generated by new investment, and this is a change from the original TIF Zone program, which rebated 75%. The reason we made the change is we, state laws have changed limiting the amount of taxes that go to TIF. So really, only two-thirds of the increment revenue will be going back to the developer, and taxing districts like the school and fire district will still get one-third of the new increment value. So to stay competitive with the Enterprise Zone program, we thought appropriate to increase the rebate amount to 100%. The program, the program also offers two tiers of benefits to mirror the Enterprise Zone, four and seven years, and Nick will get into how the application scoring corresponds with these benefits. So now I'll pass it over to Nick to walk through the scoring and eligibility of the WIN program.
Thanks, Jordan. And I will be conscious of time. I know we are running behind schedule this evening. This PowerPoint, as maybe encapsulated by this particular slide, is filled with a lot of nitty-gritty detail on exactly how this program works. I don't think we're going to need to dive into all the details tonight. We are here primarily just as an informative presentation. As Jordan mentioned, city council has established this program and adopted administrative rules, but before any business actually receives any of these tax rebates, they would have to come back through Planning Commission as part of the program. Before this is ever actually implemented on a, on an individual business, city staff will be back before you again and going over all of this in detail once again at that point in time. This is really just to give you a, a heads up of what might be coming down the pike in the future, assuming that this program is as attractive as we hope it is and developers are interested in bringing their investment to the city of Wilsonville. So the key scoring criteria are four: capital investment, new employment, local business tenure, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. The bulk of the points that any developer is going to receive will come from those first two, capital investment and new employment. So for every half a million dollars that is invested, they receive one point, and for every job they bring to the community, they receive anywhere from zero to 0.6 points. Those are relatively small point values, and a business needs to have at least 60 points to qualify for the partial incentive and 80 points for the full incentive. So you can see that this program is targeted to businesses that bring a whole lot of capital investment and a whole lot of high-wage jobs to the area. The other two criteria here are, again, as Jordan said, things we refer to as extra credit. So if the business, rather than being from out of town, is an existing business in the city of Wilsonville, they can receive an additional half a point for every year they've been in business in the city, which caps out at four points after eight years. So that's not going to be enough for them to get the full amount of the score necessary to qualify, but it could be enough to make the difference between no incentive and partial incentive or partial and full. Likewise, businesses that can meet two of the six DEI criteria would also be able to receive four extra points that way. So Jordan, the next slide. So the scoring system, as I mentioned, any business that receives less than 60 points would not qualify for the program. 60 to 79 points would receive partial benefits, that's a tax rebate for four years, and then 80 points or more would receive the full benefits, which is a tax rebate for seven years. That 80-point threshold was tied back to the original TIF Zone program. So the original program said that a business should qualify if they had $25 million of investment and 75 jobs with at least 125% of the county wage. Those same criteria, if they were applied to this new system, would get you exactly 80 points and would qualify for the full benefits. We just provided additional tiers so that businesses that don't meet that full threshold could still receive some benefit from the program, and we'd have an incentive to offer to them, as well as the flexibility to meet that same level of investment in jobs, but by, you know, adding more investment, fewer jobs, or vice versa. So the next slide. So here, we're going to quickly run through some examples of exactly what types of businesses would or would not qualify for the incentive. I, I will run through these slides pretty quickly. What we can see here is the whole universe of potential businesses out there, with the number of jobs they're operating on the left and then the number of, or the amount of investment along the bottom. Any business that falls into the dark blue category would qualify for the full seven-year rebate. Any business that falls into the light blue ban would qualify for the partial four-year incentive, and a business that happened to fall in the sort of dotted gray area would not qualify for any incentive. So point A that's showing up on the slide right now is a business with $20 million of investment, 150 jobs. You can see as the title on the slide says, these are assumed to be jobs at 100 to 125% of county-wide average wages. That type of business would qualify for the partial incentive, which would then allow the city to begin preparing an urban renewal plan, which would then come back to Planning Commission for you to look at at that point in time and recommend on the city council. Jordan, if you click a few, a few more times, it'll show a few other dots on here. And so point B and C are just showing if that same business were to have either more jobs or more investment, it could then move over into the dark blue area and it would qualify for the full seven-year worth of rebate instead of four years. And then I think one more time, we see point B, whereas if this same business had 150 jobs but only $10 million of investment, it would no longer qualify for any incentive. Jordan, the next slide shows the same overall relationships, but this is if those jobs were paying 125% to 150% of the county-wide wage. And you can see at this level of wages, the amount of blue on the chart increases, and so more businesses will qualify at lower number of jobs as those wages go up. And one more slide, this again shows even higher-wage jobs, over 150% of the county-wide average. And again, that makes it easier for businesses to qualify with the same level of investment and same number of jobs. As the wages go up, it becomes a, a lower threshold for those businesses to jump over. Next slide. And Jordan, if you click it just a couple more times so we see all the businesses on here, this just shows, again, other illustrations of potential hypothetical businesses, different amounts of capital investment, employment, and salaries, and whether or not they would qualify for these incentives. So I won't belabor the point now, though I will mention that the city is in talks with one business that is interested in an investment that would look an awful lot like column A, and that business, it shows, would absolutely qualify for the program. So talks are ongoing with interested parties that may be a great fit for this program and bring a lot of investment and jobs to the community. All of that talked about businesses, what they would need to qualify. Now we'll have a couple of slides that say, well, what does qualifying really get you? This shows a typical tax rate for the city of Wilsonville, if not universal, so different parts of the city are in different counties or have different school districts, but this is fairly typical. And we can see that the total tax rate is $19 per thousand of assessed value. Of that, $12.91 are the permanent rate levies. As Jordan mentioned earlier, the permanent rate levies are the only ones that are subject to tax increment financing through urban renewal. The local option levies and general obligation bonds are no longer impacted by urban renewal. So since this whole program is predicated on the use of urban renewal, when this business moves in and they begin paying their taxes, only the portion of their tax bill that's generated from permanent rate levies would be collected as tax increment finance or TIF revenue, and that's the money that would be available for a rebate as long as they meet the criteria that they agree to upfront. And those local option levies and GO bonds, you can see that some of the largest dollar amounts there are for the school district and the Walton Valley Fire and Rescue. So those important services would benefit right out of the gates for any of this new development, because as they pay their taxes, they would be paying those local option levies and general obligation bonds to those districts that impose them. Next slide shows a hypothetical investment, $20 million of, of new improvement. If that were assessed locally by the county assessor, it would wind up having an assessed value of 12.7 million. That's due to Oregon's wonky property tax system and the changed property ratio. That means that that business would then pay $242,000 worth of property taxes in its first year, and roughly two-thirds of that, $164,000, would wind up going to the urban renewal area, which would then be rebated to the business, less the administrative costs of the program. In terms of the application and how a business would qualify for the program, we do want to highlight that there is a limit on how many acres of land any city can have within all of its urban renewal areas combined. Right now, because the city of Wilsonville does have three active urban renewal areas, there's only about 143 acres of remaining capacity. We are not anticipating that there will be hundreds upon hundreds of acres of new development rushing to qualify for this program right out of the gates, but if that did happen, there is a limit of 143 acres that could be approved. As Jordan noted, the existing year 2000 plan and West Side Plan urban renewal areas are slated to expire in the coming years, and once that happens, that'll open up another eight to 900 acres worth of capacity in the event that there is ongoing and significant demand for this program. The application, once the business applies, and it is meant to be a relatively clear and objective application, where we are looking at their job, their salaries, their years in business, the amount of investment they're going to bring to the area, the city would meet with them at a pre-authorization conference. If everything looks like it's on the level and, and this development is really going to happen and bring the benefits that they are promising, the city would begin to work on two separate documents, one being a development agreement, so a legal contract between the city and the developer on terms of who is going to provide what, you know, what the developer is, is planning to build, and if they build that, what benefits the city would provide to them. And then the implementing agreement is the new urban renewal plan. So one would need to be adopted for each business that qualifies for the program. So the schedule for that urban renewal plan typically... typically, this would take seven to eight months at a minimum when we look at past efforts like the Coffee Creek Urban Renewal Area. Here, because it is a single property and because the city has developed a template document to use, it would be a streamlined approach, but that streamlined approach is still looking at roughly a four-month timeline, from the time a draft plan is put together until it becomes effective. And there are a number of public meetings that happen along that timeline. First is the Urban Renewal Agency that would meet, discuss the plan, and choose whether or not to recommend it on to Planning Commission. Then Planning Commission would meet and review the plan and decide whether or not to recommend it on to City Council. And then there'd be a City Council hearing with two meetings, a first reading of the adoption and then a vote to finally adopt the plan. Along with that timeline, there is, required by statute, a 45-day period to consult and confer with the taxing districts. So even though this urban renewal plan can be adopted unilaterally by the city of Wilsonville, all of the affected taxing districts, the county, the school, the fire district, all need to be kept in the loop as this thing moves forward. So they all receive a copy of the plan and meet with city staff to discuss what's going on and have an opportunity to weigh in and make their voices heard on whether or not they support this program. To note on that, there was, as the City Council put this program together, a task force meeting that was held, the Urban Renewal Task Force, including representatives of those affected taxing districts. And all members of the task force unanimously said that they thought that this was the right direction for the city to be adding, a great use of urban renewal and a great timing to have a new tool to help the local economy. So when that plan comes forward, it also includes a report that accompanies it. That report has a number of things that need to be included in it by statute. Again, these are things that are related to urban renewal statute, not necessarily something that the city came up with on their own related to this WIN program. This includes going over existing conditions, describing any projects in the plan with fund. In this case, that project description is only a property tax rebate incentive to the developer, and then a financial analysis of the plan, saying how much money would be raised and spent over time. Next slide shows the components of the plan itself, which describes goals and objectives. Again, that project description talks about how the plan could be amended over time and establishes the maximum indebtedness of the plan, which is the total amount of money that could be spent over the plan lifetime. Next slide. So all of that background, and now the part that I think is particularly salient for this group, the Planning Commission's role. So urban renewal statutes, ORS 457, require that every urban renewal plan be brought before the Planning Commission at a meeting, and that the Planning Commission must decide whether or not to recommend that plan forward to City Council. The urban renewal statutes are relatively vague on exactly what the planning commission should be looking at when they make that recommendation. However, related sections of statute make it clear that urban renewal plans must conform to the local comprehensive plan. And so traditionally, that has been the role of Planning Commissions as they look at urban renewal areas. Does this conform to the comprehensive plan? In Coffee Creek, a sort of typical urban renewal area, that gets into areas of citizen engagement, urban growth management, public facilities and services, transportation, and economic development because that urban renewal area is going to be funding a whole lot of public projects and investments that touch on all of those different areas. When it comes to the WIN program and these smaller site-specific urban renewal areas that aren't funding public improvements but are only funding rebates to the developers, we're looking at citizen engagement, industrial development, and economic development sections of the city's plans. So hopefully, as we rushed through all of that, it still made some sense to you all, and Jordan and I are here to answer any questions you have. And again, know that there's no decision being made tonight, but that before any decision actually is made in the future on any individual investment, city staff would be back before you to go over that in detail again for the specific project at hand.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Everlyans?
Yeah, real quick. So why not make tenure more valuable in the calculation of points? You know, to me, I was running the numbers. And for 60 points, you're looking at a 7% bump and at 80 points, a 5% bump. It just doesn't seem like a lot to show appreciation for longstanding employers. And it just seems, maybe seems a little light to me.
Jordan, I can offer my thoughts on that. So I worked with Jordan on developing the point thresholds as well as working with City Council to get their input on those point thresholds. The original intent of the program really was to incentivize high-value investments. We want to encourage high-value as well as high-wage investments. Though referring to some of that comprehensive plan language, we really were emphasizing the amount of capital investment. The addition of local business tenure, as well as DEI, were brought up as things that the city wanted to encourage or wanted to reward, but didn't want to overwhelmingly skew the core focus of the program. So at the end of the day, City Council does want this to be about bringing in new taxable assessed value. That's a win-win to all the taxing districts, all the taxpayers to have this additional tax base. And that is the core focus of the program, but recognizing that we did want to add some value so that local businesses would not have quite as high of a bar that they would need to clear as an out-of-town business. Also worth noting that the DEI requirements, while some businesses will have an easier time qualifying for them, if they are minority-owned, woman-owned, or a registered B corporation, they get some points right out of the gates. But any business can make commitments to meet those DEI initiatives. And so a business that is a longstanding business in the city of Wilsonville would get four points for that. If they said that they wanted to make those DEI commitments, they'd get another four points. So combined, those add up to eight points, which does get you to 10% of the minimum qualifying score.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. I appreciate that.
I think that's right. I just had one more comment. Like Nick said, it was really designed to be a tiebreaker consideration. So in a couple of the examples that we looked at, if the, absent the Wilsonville longevity or diversity, equity, inclusion considerations, a business might be on the edge. And then with this considered into their score, it would put them into the, bumped them into the next category of partial rebate or full rebate. And with the four points, that is equal to about $2 million of investment, which is significant.
Okay. Thank you. Greenfield? You're muted, are you? I can't hear you. You're muted, Jerry.
Unmuted. Same. I was present at the inception of the TIF program, not as a member of the task force, but as an observer of the whole process. And so I think I understood the intention of it and basically how it worked. I think that this is a tremendous improvement on it. I can't imagine fine-tuning it any better than it is.
Thank you. Any other comments? Don't see any hands up. It must be getting late. This is great. I don't see any additional questions or comments, and we are going to see this again and in more detail as was explained. It looks like it's a great improvement. And my only question is, where in Australia are you going?
I will be outside of Brisbane in a town called Gold Coast.
Gold Coast? My aunt lives-
My in-laws. My wife is Australian, so we'll be close to her family.
Excellent. My aunt lives in Gold Coast, so. There you go. You'll love it. Very good. So the next item here is the City Council Action Minutes that was included in your packet, and also the PC Work Program, which seems to give us a break for the next meeting. Ms. Bates, is this a gift from you for the holidays?
Hold on a second. Good evening.
There you are.
I'm here.
Hi.
It's the first time you guys have probably seen me up close in a long time. So I think the gift actually came from yourselves. You guys made it through all of the really big policy questions that Dan Pauly put before you this evening on the middle housing work, which was the biggest question. If you needed more time to be able to work through those, then we were going to hold the meeting in December so that you would have more time to do that. But congratulations. You did a really great job making some tough decisions this evening and giving us really good feedback. So thank you. And with that, we do not see a need for a December meeting. If there aren't any other questions on that agenda, so I will formally announce the cancellation tonight to you, and Tammy will send everything out tomorrow. If there are no other questions, I do have one other brief item that I would like to cover.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So it's that time again. I would like to honor and express my deep gratitude to the service of one of our fellow commissioners, Phyllis Millen. Tonight will be her last meeting since we're not having a December meeting. She has termed out. She has spent two years with us on Planning Commission. And I'm going to bestow this nice plaque to you. We'll go ahead and give that to you when you come by the office. We'll give you a call and arrange that. She has spent two terms on Planning Commission prior to that, also served on the Development Review Board, like many of you. She has spent a lot of time, giving of her time, to this community. And the city owes you a debt of gratitude for that time and that commitment. As all of you here know, there are meetings every month, but there's packets that go out. There's always committees that we ask you to participate in. There's open houses. There's block parties. There's a lot that goes into being a Planning Commissioner for the city of Wilsonville. And there's a lot of ways that you can choose to spend your time. And you've chosen to spend a lot of time, Phyllis, giving back to your community and spending time on the DRB and the Planning Commission at all these different events because you care deeply about the community that you live in. And I just wanted to tell you, thank you. It goes noticed. It is very appreciated. One of the best things about getting to work in Wilsonville is the fact that we have such amazing volunteers. And it's really a pleasure for me to get to know you and get to work with you, get to think through all these difficult conversations and difficult policy choices. And what's always stood out to me with you through Frog Pond and the Town Center and even tonight is the thinking through, what does this mean to the everyday resident that lives in Wilsonville? And how might this impact them? And how will that help this city continue to grow in a way that maintains the great qualities about Wilsonville as we make these new decisions and we move forward? So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you. I know I speak for all of us here at the city. We wish we could have cake to celebrate with you, but we can't. So tonight, maybe each of you can go find something in your own cupboards or refrigerators to celebrate. So with that, I just want to let you know I hold so much respect and gratitude for you and thank you for your commitment to the city, Phyllis.
Thank you. I guess, am I unmuted? Yeah. I guess I just want to say that thank you. It's been an honor and a pleasure working with the city staff there. The dedication of the staff is amazing to me and the amount of work that they do on each one of these projects. I guess what you said about myself, it's nice to know that some of the new commissioners are just the same. They're dedicated to making Wilsonville a great place to live. So I've enjoyed meeting all the folks that I have over the years and working with the different commissioners and wish the best of luck to the new ones because it is a lot of work, but the rewards, and when you see what you have been involved with and see the development that comes from that and when it comes to fruition. And having been on the commission long enough, you know, I saw Villaboa built, you know, it makes a difference. You see that you do make a difference. So I hope that each of the new commissioners take that into account, that you may not see it tomorrow, but in the years to come. And the citizens will thank you. So thank you.
Commissioner Greenfield, did you have your hand up?
Oh, I was giving thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Well, I know that I will miss Phyllis's inputs and questions and insights. And I'm hoping that as we get into some of these tickets of decision-making, that you will feel the, what you just said about all your fellow commissioners, that camaraderie there to give us a call and say, hey, you know, think about this angle. It's going to hit you on the side of the head. You don't seem to be looking at it straight. So anyway, I really appreciate your input and insight on a lot of the decisions that the commission has had to make.
Thank you. Thank you. And you know, when you always keep asking for citizens' input, just be careful. In the future, there may be more.
I was just asking, I was just asking for your input. Just joking. Everybody's input, but the interesting thing is that once we have rapport, the conversation becomes a conversation of almost two friends, and there is a meeting of the minds that comes from that kind of having worked together.
Yeah. Thank you. I agree.
Any of the other commissioners? You have a cake?
Yeah. Phyllis, it's been great working with you. I've really enjoyed it. You know, as everybody else said, it's great having the diversity of thought and the different perspectives and backgrounds. And so you've always brought that, and it's been a pleasure to work with you and hope to see you as a citizen involved in the future.
Thank you.
Hey, Phyllis, this is Aaron. I hadn't worked with you that long, but you know, the short time that we've worked together, I really enjoyed it. You asked very thoughtful questions, and you can see in your face that you're really thinking about it. So one last question. We've been doing it all this time now.
Oh, I keep filling it up with other things. So I'm still heavily involved with the Twolleton National Wildlife Refuge, where I do a lot of volunteer work. So, but you know, I keep thinking about Parks and Rec, you know. Someday, I mean, that's one of my interests. So I, you never know. I may step back up in a different capacity.
I hear you. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. Is that it for the night? Thank you. Very good. So I am awaiting a call for adjournment from any one of you.
I'll so move.
Thank you very much. It has been moved. Have a wonderful time, everybody.
All right. Good night, everyone. I'll see you around.
Yeah, I hope so.
Okay. Good night.